Good afternoon and welcome to the September 13th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Supervisor Chan. Chan, present. Supervisor Dorsey. Dorsey, present. Supervisor Mandelman.
Present.
Mandelman, present. Supervisor Marr.
Present.
Marr, present. Supervisor Melgar. Melgar, present. Supervisor Peskin.
Present.
Peskin, present. Supervisor Preston. Preston, present. Supervisor Ronan. Ronan, not present. Supervisor Safaii. Safaii, present. Supervisor Stephanie. Stephanie, present. And Supervisor Walton.
Present.
Walton, present. Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The San Francisco Board of Supervisors acknowledges that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatoush Aloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatoush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatoush Aloni community, and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. Colleagues, please stand with me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I would like to acknowledge the staff at SFGOV-TV. Today, we have Kalina Mendoza, who record each of our meetings and make the transcripts available to the public online. Madam Clerk, I have seen the mayor. Can we go to our 2:00 PM special order?
Yes, Mr. President. The special order at 2:00 PM is the appearance at today's meeting by the Honorable Mayor London N. Breed, present to engage in a formal policy discussion with eligible board members. Prior to the discussion, the mayor may address the board for up to five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome, Madam Mayor. Do you have any opening remarks?
Yes, thank you, President Walton, and good afternoon, Supervisors. Over the summer, we saw a lot of excitement in this city. Tourists, particularly from Europe, were everywhere. Events like Outside Lands and the Warriors Championship Parade made San Francisco shine. And our neighborhoods were packed with residents and visitors. But with all of that positive movement with our recovery, we're also seeing downtown continue to recover far too slowly. Yet, San Francisco is not alone in dealing with the impacts of work from home. Our current office attendance is on par with Los Angeles, San Jose, and New York. This is a change that is playing out across the country. Here in San Francisco, we need to do more to drive our recovery and plan for a new future. San Francisco is a resilient city that has risen to the challenge before and can do it again. We've identified five areas that we need to focus on: filling vacancies and diversifying industries, enhancing downtown vibrancy, maintaining a clean and safe city, increasing and improving access to downtown, and growing our labor force. We have already made some progress in these areas. For example, together, we passed a budget that invested in bringing festivals and other activations downtown, supporting small businesses, recruiting and retaining police officers, and supporting ambassadors on our streets. Those are positive steps, but we have a lot more to do. We need to get creative and be open to a wide range of solutions. We need to think differently than we've had in recent years, and I need your partnership in this. This is about the future of our city. The reality is that so many of the programs and services we provide to help those most in need, the priorities so many of us care about are funded by taxes from our downtown area. If we don't take steps now, and if we don't do things differently, we will lose out on that funding, and we'll be forced to make budget cuts. That's not what any of us want. It's not what our residents want either. They want us to work together on solutions, to create a stronger, more resilient downtown that supports workers, small businesses, and is the economic engine, not just for our city, but our entire region. So my ask of you is this: let's be open to ideas. I know many of you are doing work in this area and are interested in coming up with creative solutions, and I believe we can do this together. And there is hope for our city. People want to bet on San Francisco. Just last week, Supervisor Dorsey and I attended a groundbreaking for a project at Van Nessen Market. Three hundred and thirty-three new homes, twenty-five percent of which will be affordable, and nine floors of office space. That doesn't happen if there aren't people who believe in our future. But we need to show that same commitment and hope. We have a lot of policy work ahead of us, and in the coming weeks, I know more ideas will come out. So let's dig in, have the conversations, and move solutions forward that will support our economic recovery. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first topic?
The first topic submitted by the member representing District Five is Supervisor Preston is public transit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Supervisor Preston, please ask your opening question.
Thank you, President Walton, and good afternoon, Mayor Breed, and thank you for being here for question time. This month is Transit Month, and I enjoyed celebrating public transit with you at last week's rally on the steps of City Hall. I believe strongly that there is no economic recovery without a full and complete transit recovery. For over two years, residents have suffered from the lack of a robust transit recovery plan. Fortunately, thanks in large part to pressure from transit riders, activists, muni operators, and this Board of Supervisors, we stopped line eliminations and reversed fare hikes during the pandemic. The MTA has made significant progress in recent months, listening to riders and operators, and restoring crucial lines like the 21 Hayes, 2 Clement, and 6 Parnassus in my district, and extending full routes of other lines like the 43 Masonic. Despite the progress, we remain in a public transit emergency. Service is lacking, and ridership is low, both far below pre-pandemic levels. Nowhere is the lack of service more notable than during the evening and nighttime hours. And, Madam Mayor, my question is this: what is your plan for restoring evening and nighttime muni service?
Well, thank you, Supervisor Preston, for the question. As someone who grew up riding the 5 Fulton, 31 Balboa, and 22 Fillmore, I know what muni means for all of our residents. And coming out of this pandemic, we know that our economic recovery needs to be built on a foundation of a strong transportation system. But that doesn't mean things will look the same as they used to, because people are not traveling the same way that we were in 2019. We need to prioritize service based on our equity needs, to match the way that people need to use it now, and to support our downtown's economic recovery. We're so happy to hear from constituents that our restored service that you mentioned is reliable, and people can count on it. That is what is most important. But we need to be honest about our limitations. We don't have enough operators and mechanics to run more service right now. There was a hiring freeze during the pandemic, and we've had more retirements and natural attrition than we could keep up with. So I've asked SFMTA to expedite hiring and to streamline the process, so we can hire more operators as soon as possible. I know what a great job being a muni transit operator is. A lot of people I grew up with are working there every single day. That's why we're promoting this opportunity within the city and throughout the Bay Area, through our job fairs, and in partnership with our workforce development teams. Facing historic challenges these last two years with ridership dropping dramatically, we should be proud of the work that MTA has done to remain nimble in making data-driven decisions when providing critical services all throughout our city and our neighborhood corridors. Even though we have lots to be proud of, we know that we still have a lot more work to do, and I look forward to working with the board and the community to make sure that we build a transit system for the future. We are not there. We got a lot of work to do, and I'm hopeful that we can get there.
Thank you, Mayor Breed. Supervisor Preston, do you have a follow-up question?
Thank you, President Walton, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the response and for your work on public transit. I do want to follow up just more specifically about nighttime and evening service. I want to just underscore just how dire the situation is right now for people trying to use public transit in the evenings and at night in our city. These are workers trying to get home after a shift, residents trying to go out in the evening, and tourists trying to enjoy our restaurants, bars, and music venues. They depend on public transit availability outside of the nine-to-five hours, and currently, our system is just not responsive to their needs. Thirty of our current muni lines have significantly earlier end times than before the pandemic. Many of these lines, they ran before the pandemic until midnight, 12:30, 1:00 AM, and now they end at 9:00 PM or 10:00 PM. And the OWL service, our late-night service, has yet to return to anywhere near pre-pandemic levels. This has left people waiting at the curb and more often forced people to either drive or spend an hour's wage on a taxi or TNC. Our neighborhoods, as you noted, Mayor Breed, are working so hard to recover and showing such resilience, but leaving them without evening bus service undermines these efforts. People need to be able to get around the city easily at night without having to use a car. This is a key part of our neighborhood economic recovery that has not received the attention it deserves. So my follow-up question is this: more specifically, what is your message to the restaurant or theater worker who gets off at 11:00 PM, or to the janitor who finishes their shift in the early morning hours, or to the bartender leaving work at 2:00 AM who cannot use public transit to get home after a long night of work?
Well, thank you for your follow-up question, Supervisor Preston. And, you know, you're preaching to the choir here, you know, in terms of all the people that you're talking about. Many of those people are people that I actually personally know, who are struggling in this city. But when you talk about muni service as being dire in this nine-to-five thing, that's not entirely accurate. But part of what I mentioned in my comments is the fact that we need to focus on making sure that muni is reliable, and not stretching it too thin so that it's inconsistent. One of the biggest challenges we faced was the fact that sometimes the line is running and sometimes it isn't. And inconsistency is something that we're dealing with every single day. But the truth is, as I said, we do not have enough operators and mechanics to run service right now. So we are focusing on using data for those lines that are most used, trying to restore the lines that, you know, people are most interested in using, and trying to make sure that the service is efficient. I don't think it's as problematic in certain areas and times as what you have mentioned, especially seeing so many of our buses along San Francisco on the weekends, in fact, and in the evenings on the weekends, that have been completely empty, because I pay very close attention to that. But more importantly, in working with Jeff Tomlin and the SFMTA, I pay very close attention to the data. And our goal is to make sure that it's data-driven in terms of how we make decisions about the particular lines. Our long-term plans are to hire more people, to get the lines running, and to move forward as aggressively as we possibly can. But we also need to have an honest conversation about seeing many of our buses and our trains completely empty in those evening hours. So it's not as simple as one-size-fits-all, and it's not entirely accurate in terms of how you're portraying the problem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You may now ask a question to Supervisor Preston or to any other supervisor in attendance pertaining to the same topic but not necessarily related to the previous question.
Thank you, President Walton. I will pass on asking a question at this time.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Supervisor Preston, for your questions. This concludes the District Five topic discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the next topic?
The second topic submitted by the member representing District Eight Supervisor Mandelman is homelessness and street conditions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Supervisor Mandelman, please ask your question.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for being with us for question time. So, back on November 27th, 2018, I asked you at question time if Castro residents could expect to see an improvement in street conditions, given the expansion of shelter beds and other investments in solving homelessness. At the time, you answered that you believed they would, and since then, my office and I have worked closely with you and your team, and I'm grateful for the attention you have devoted to these issues. And we have certainly seen significant improvement from conditions at the height of COVID in 2020. But the status quo, encampments, open drug sales and use, and people who are in danger to themselves or others roaming the streets, is clearly unacceptable. Residents and merchants reach out to my office every day describing scenes of open drug use and public intoxication that are unsafe for everyone involved. And recently, the Castro merchants threatened to withhold property taxes and city fees if conditions did not improve. So while I am grateful for the opportunity to collaborate with your office and for your genuine care and love for this neighborhood, which I know is real, at this point, I don't feel I can honestly tell my constituents in the Castro that we've made the progress we wanted to, or that we have a clear plan to get where we want to be. So, Madam Mayor, what can I tell them? Do we have a path forward? Can we make this better on a reasonable timeline? If so, how? And if not, why not?
Well, thank you, Supervisor Mandelman, and, you know, I can appreciate, you know, just the challenging situation that you're in. I understand the frustrations of the residents and businesses of the Castro. I'm frustrated, too. And part of my frustration comes because we've been adding new shelter beds and housing like never before, with a thousand shelter beds in the process being added over the next three months, and nearly 3,000 new permanent supported housing units being added to our existing portfolio of over 9,000 housing units. The city is working to meet the health needs of those who have more complex situations. We are on track to open 294 new treatment beds of our committed 400 behavioral health beds. That's nearly 75% of our goal, on top of our existing 2,200 slots for those with serious mental illness and substance use challenges. But even with all of these resources, more and more, we are encountering people who we cannot help simply by offering them a bed. So many of the people we are tracking in the Castro have refused what staff has offered them. These individuals are struggling, and they need more, and we need to make it clear that this is an option they need to take. The change is going to have to come in two ways. First, better coordination between departments, so that when someone is not accepting resources, they're not allowed to continue to disrupt the neighborhood. We are working on that now. For example, the Department of Public Health has added behavioral health outreach staff that are working every day in the Castro specifically, and with the Police Department and homeless outreach teams. With this improved coordination, we will identify when someone has clearly rejected our help and a different intervention is required. If multiple offers of service and shelter are refused, the police will not allow individuals to continue to disrupt the neighborhoods. And I know you know this better than anyone else: we need changes to our state law. While Care Court will add a new tool for certain individuals, our broader conservatorship reforms failed to make it through the legislature this year. But we will try again next year. In addition to this work, we will continue to bring resources online as fast as possible, not just in the Castro, but for all of our neighborhoods. And we will continue our work with groups like the Castro merchants to discuss how the city can coordinate, can continue to partner effectively with them going forward. That's my commitment, and I look forward to working with you on it. And I know it's frustrating, and I know it's not enough, but we don't exactly have all of the tools necessary to make the kind of difference I'm hoping to make, not just in the Castro, but in the city. But it doesn't mean that we won't still try, and we won't still push for change.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Supervisor Mandelman, you may ask a follow-up question directly related to the opening question.
Thank you, President Walton, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for that response. And I want to accentuate and emphasize what I think you are saying, that increased coordination between our Department of Public Health and HOT on the one team, and the San Francisco Police Department on the other is essential, and that we need both of those sets of folks stepping forward, working together to get people the care that they need, but ultimately also to keep our public spaces safe. And so I guess what I want to follow up on is: what do you need from this Board of Supervisors to accelerate progress on encampments, open drug use and sales, and untreated mental illness on our streets?
I need, you know, support, more importantly. But as we make historic investments in shelter, housing, and behavioral health, we need to understand that there will always be a role for public safety. We need the Board of Supervisors to support the police, so that they can play an important role in keeping our streets safe and addressing criminal behavior, while we continue to conduct outreach and connect people to services and resources. You can also work with me to advance our broader conservatorship reforms that failed with our state legislature this coming year. In the next term, once signed by the governor, we have a big task ahead of us in implementing the Care Court legislation. And I ask you to support our city departments in carrying this out. And as innovative new housing and service solutions are brought before you to support, you can help direct investments and rally constituents to support the solutions we need as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You may now ask a follow-up question to Supervisor Mandelman or to any other supervisor in attendance pertaining to the same topic but not necessarily related to the previous question.
Thank you, President Walton. I have no questions at this time.
Well, thank you so much for being here with us this afternoon, Madam Mayor. This concludes the District Eight topic discussion, and this also concludes our mayoral discussion for this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Bye-bye. Madam Clerk, any communications?
Yes, Mr. President. The Board of Supervisors welcomes the public to the Legislative Chamber here in Room 250 to advise the Board either in person or just to listen to the proceedings. The meeting is airing live on SFGOV-TV's award-winning Channel 26, or you may view the computer livestream at www.sfgovtv.org. Additionally, participating remotely is still possible via the telephone call-in system. Best practice is to call in early from a quiet location. Once it is your turn to speak, to avoid that feedback, make sure that your television or your computer sound is turned down. The Board will prioritize hearing testimony or comments from those who attend in person thereafter. The Board will hear from those who called into the remote system. Please note, the remote system will be open one time, and once it's closed, it will not be reopened for that item. Throughout the meeting, the telephone number is streaming on your screen. It's 415-655-0001. When you hear the system prompt, enter the meeting ID, 2496-746-9953. Press the pound symbol twice. You will know you have joined the meeting once you hear the discussion, but your line will be muted. But once you are ready to provide your comment, that is when you should press star three to add yourself to the speaker's queue, and the system will then prompt you that you have been unmuted and just begin speaking your comments. Today, the only agenda content that is eligible for comment is, once Item 21 is called, that is when you may speak to. The two sets of minutes, soon to be considered by the Board, not to be approved until after the general public comment is concluded. Items 22 through 25, the items for consideration on the adoption without committee reference calendar, and general matters that are not on today's agenda but are within the Board's subject matter jurisdiction. I will also point out that there are two public hearings at today's Board meeting. The first item is the Committee of the Whole, Item 17. That is a Committee of the Whole Public Hearing on the Tourism Improvement District. And secondarily, the Committee of the Whole on the Laguna Honda Hospital. That is Item 19. Each of those items will have their own public testimony associated with it. Communication is still possible with the Board. You can send your written correspondence to the San Francisco Board of Supervisors, the number one, Dr. Carlton B. Goodlett Place, here in City Hall, Room 244, San Francisco, California, 94102, or send the Board an email using the email address bos@sfgov.org. In a great partnership with the Office of Civic Engagement and Demigrant Affairs, interpreters will be present, beginning with the first public hearing on the Item 17, 18, 19, and then during general public comment. And finally, if you have any questions accessing this meeting, please call the Clerk's office at 5415-554-5184. We have a clerk standing by to assist you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, before we get started, just a friendly reminder to please mute your microphones when you are not speaking. We are now at approval of meeting minutes, and today, we are approving the meeting minutes from the July 26th, 2022 Regular Board Meeting, and August 8th, 2022 Special Board Meeting. I don't see anyone on the roster, any changes to the meeting minutes. Madam Clerk, would you... Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes made by Supervisor Preston, seconded by Supervisor Mandelman? Madam Clerk?
On the minutes as presented, Supervisor Dorsey. Dorsey, aye. Supervisor Mandelman. Mandelman, aye. Supervisor Marr. Marr, aye. Supervisor Melgar. Melgar, aye. Supervisor Peskin. Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston. Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan. Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safaii. Safaii, aye. Supervisor Stephanie. Stephanie, aye. Supervisor Walton.
Aye.
Walton, aye. And Supervisor Chan. Chan, aye. There are 11 ayes.
Without objection, the minutes will be approved after public comment as presented. Madam Clerk, let's go to our consent agenda, Items 2 through 8.
Items 2 through 8, listed under the consent agenda, are considered to be routine. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member would like to have an item removed and considered separately. Otherwise, these items will be acted upon by a single roll-call vote of the Board.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't see anyone on the roster, so we will take these items same, house same call. Without objection, these ordinances are finally passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, please call regular agenda, new business, Items 9 and 10 together.
Items 9 and 10 called together are two resolutions that support the provision of early care and education integrated services to support implementation of the citywide plan for early care and education. Item 9 retroactively approves the grant agreement with the Children's Council of San Francisco for the term through June 30th, 2024, in an amount not to exceed 364 million. And Item 10 retroactively approves the grant agreement with the Woo-Yi Children's Services for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024, in an amount not to exceed 144 million.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Supervisor Melgar.
Thank you so much, President Walton. So, colleagues, first, I wanted to say thank you to the Budget and Finance Committee for hearing this item and the discussion that we had at the committee. This will... These two resolutions will ensure continuity of funding to the two most important entities that disburse subsidies for childcare in our city through the merger of First Five and the Department of Early Care and Education. So as that process is going, you know, these two resolutions will ensure that the money that has been flowing continues to flow. But it also reflects, as you will see, a very large increase, because we are now dispersing baby props C funds, as they were intended, to make sure that now middle-income families receive the subsidies that they need to be able to afford childcare in the city. So it is our commitment, as was, you know, approved by the voters when they approve baby props C, to families of, you know, babies and toddlers in our city, to expand access and support a system of universal childcare in San Francisco. And I also believe that Supervisor Marr has asked to be a cosponsor. So thank you so much for your support in this effort, colleagues.
Thank you, Supervisor Melgar. Supervisor Safaii?
Thank you, President Walton. Just wanted to... I think it was a mistake. We should have been added as a cosponsor as well. Put a lot of time and effort into this policy area. Over the years, I want to thank Supervisor Melgar for all her tremendous work, and we really look forward to the implementation of this. And she said this in committee, former president of the Board, Supervisor Norman Yi. I mean, boy... president of the Board, Supervisor Norman Yi. I mean, boy, this is part of his legacy, and it's really coming to fruition now today. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Safaiyi. Supervisor Preston?
Please add me as a cosponsor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Preston. And Madam Clerk, I would like to be added as a cosponsor as well.
Noted. Thank you.
Seeing no one else on the roster, we will take these items same house, same call. And without objection, these resolutions are adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, let's go to our 2:30 PM special order.
Yes, the 2:30 PM special order is the recognition of commendations for meritorious service to the city and county of San Francisco. I have here Supervisor Mandelman.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Supervisor Mandelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have our, I think we do have our Golden Gate Men's Chorus, folks. Come on up. So colleagues, today I would like for us to recognize the Golden Gate Men's Chorus, or GGMC, on--
No, sir, sir, excuse me, at the microphone.
But--
The public podium.
To the podium. There we go. Perfect. I want to recognize the Golden Gate Men's Chorus on their Ruby Jubilee celebrating 40 years of outstanding music and community in San Francisco. The GGMC began as the Dick Kramer Gay Men's Chorale in 1982 and was a founding member of Gayla Choruses, the Gay and Lesbian Association of Choruses. After Dick Kramer's retirement in 1988, the chorus reorganized itself as the Golden Gate Men's Chorus, and since then has continued to present high-quality performances of men's choral music, often in collaboration with other Bay Area music groups. Though the chorus has its roots in the gay community, its membership now includes both gay men and straight allies, with members ranging in age from their 20s to their 70s, and the chorus prides itself on the ethnic and social diversity of its membership and creating a nurturing environment for members' artistic and social self-expression. Since 2010, GGMC has been led by music director Joseph Piazza, and since that time, the chorus has continued to receive numerous awards and accolades. In 2014, the chorus won two gold medals and a silver medal at the World Choir Games in Riga, Latvia. In 2016, GGMC won the male chorus category at the Golden State Choral Trophy Competition in Monterey. And in 2018, GGMC took first place in the Adult Folk Song Choir Competition at Langolyn, Langoy? Langolyn, International Music Ice Tedford in Wales. It is my honor to congratulate the Golden Gate Men's Chorus on their 40th anniversary, and I'm sure you will all join me, colleagues, in wishing the chorus many more successful decades to come. Congratulations. Now you get to say a few words.
Thank you, Supervisor Mandelman. My name is Richard Rosser. I'm the CEO of the Board of Directors of the Chorus. On behalf of our artistic director, Joseph Piazza, our managing director and CFO, Randall Kikukawa, who is here with me today, and he is the only member of the chorus who's been in the chorus since 1982. He was a very little boy when he joined. And on behalf of not only all of the people I mentioned, but the entire membership of the chorus, both past and present, want to thank you for this honor. After 40 years, the goal originally of the choral was to maintain a membership of about 40 male voices to concentrate on serious musical repertoire and to travel so that the tradition of gay male voices dedicated to musical excellence can carry beyond the San Francisco Bay Area. I'd like to think that we represent the best of San Francisco values. Our membership includes members of the African-American, Chinese, Filipino, Japanese, Latino, Vietnamese, and Western European communities, and as the supervisor said, we span age from 20 to 70, and I'll let you guess which end of that spectrum I'm closer to. And we're still singing. If you haven't heard us, we'd love to have you come and join us for one of our holiday concerts. The first one is December 15 at St. Matthew's Lutheran Church, right across the street from Mission Dolores, where we perform quite a few of our concerts. Also, we'll be singing at Mission Dolores, May 6 and 7, our big 40th anniversary blowout concert. And if you don't want to wait that long, or if you're not really ready to commit to an entire concert, you can come and join us a few doors down on Thursday at the Warm Memorial Opera House in the Green Room. We're having a big kickoff party for our Ruby Jubilee. So break out the ruby slippers and whatever else you have and join us. We'll be singing a few songs at that event. Again, I just want to say thanks a lot for this honor. We're thrilled to have been part of the vibrant San Francisco arts community for the past 40 years and are proud to continue for at least the next 40, singing music that represents the true San Francisco values of joy, community, beauty, resilience, and love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again to the Golden Gate Men's Chorus. And thank you so much, Supervisor Mandelman. Madam Clerk, let's go to Items 11 and 12. Would you please call them together?
Items 11 and 12 called together are two resolutions that authorize the Department of Public Health to accept and expend two grant increases from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Item 11 authorizes a grant increase of $109,000 for a new total amount of approximately $1.1 million to participate in a medical monitoring project, a program for the term June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2022. And for Item 12, this is retroactive authorization for a $2.2 million grant increase for a new total amount of approximately $3.3 million to participate in a strengthening sexually transmitted disease prevention and control program for the term of January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the roll for Items 11 and 12?
On Items 11 and 12, Supervisor Dorsey. Dorsey, aye. Supervisor Mandelman. Mandelman absent. Supervisor Marr. Marr, aye. Supervisor Melgar. Melgar, aye. Supervisor Peskin. Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston. Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan. Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safaiyi. Safaiyi, aye. Supervisor Stephanie. Stephanie, aye. Supervisor Walton.
Aye.
Walton, aye. And Supervisor Chan. Chan, aye. There are 10 ayes.
Thank you. Without objection, these resolutions are adopted. Madam Clerk, please call Item Number 13.
Item 13, resolution to retroactively authorize the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission to accept and expend federal funds sourced by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and administered by the State Water Resources Control Board with a total amount of approximately $9.3 million to assist eligible residential and commercial customers who got behind in their payments during the COVID-19 pandemic from March 4, 2020 through June 15, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll on Item Number 13.
On Item 13, Supervisor Dorsey. Dorsey, aye. Supervisor Mandelman.
Aye.
Mandelman, aye. Supervisor Marr. Marr, aye. Supervisor Melgar. Melgar, aye. Supervisor Peskin. Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston.
Aye.
Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan. Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safaiyi. Safaiyi, aye. Supervisor Stephanie. Stephanie, aye. Supervisor Walton.
Aye.
Walton, aye. And Supervisor Chan. Chan, aye. There are 11 ayes.
Thank you. Without objection, this resolution is adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, can you please call Items 14 through 16 together?
Items 14 through 16 are three resolutions that approve contract amendments to grant agreements for shelter-in-place hotel support services. Item 14 approves the Third Amendment to the agreement with Five Keys Schools and Programs and the Department of Homelessness and Support of Housing, HSH, at a shelter-in-place hotel site located at 1231 Market Street to include a three-month extension through March 31, 2023, and to increase the agreement amount by $6.5 million for a new total of $27.2 million. Item 15 approves a Sixth Amendment to an emergency agreement between HSA and 1231 Market Street Owners LP for the city's continued use of 459 hotel rooms and associated services to increase the contract amount by $9.5 million for a new total of approximately $88 million, and to extend the booking period through March 31, 2023. And for Item 16, this is a resolution that approves the Fourth Amendment to the grant agreement between the St. Vincent de Paul Society of San Francisco and the Department of Homelessness and Support of Housing, HSH, to provide shelter operations and services at the Multi-Service Center South to increase the grant agreement by $17 million for a new total of $26 million, to extend the grant agreement term by 21 months for a new total through June 30, 2024, and to authorize HSH and HAS to enter into amendments or modifications to these amendments prior to its final execution by all parties that do not materially increase the obligations or the liabilities to the city, but yet are necessary to effectuate the purposes of the grant.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Supervisor Safaiyi?
Thank you. Colleagues, just wanted to highlight one of the items here today that was a bit troublesome, but Chair Ronan and I were able to work together to really bring it a little bit more under control. This was regarding Item Number 16, MSC South. The contract originally would have extended to 2026, but because we weren't exactly sure how many shelter beds would benefit those in need, as well as, and for that reason, during COVID, they had to reduce the number of people that were served at this location. But now, as we've started to ramp back up and open up the facility, the numbers are still remaining low. Some of the reasons that were given weren't exactly 100% satisfactory, but we wanted to give the opportunity to time to observe the actual service levels. There was also a discussion about appropriate wage levels for the employees and those that would be providing services on staff and the appropriate staffing ratios. So because of all that, we shortened the original contract amount. Originally, the contract was not able to have been found. They found it the day of the hearing, so we were happy about that. But we also learned that the contract was not, had not gone through the Board approval process prior. This time around, it was put out for a competitive bidding process. We felt comfortable about that, but just wanted colleagues and the public to know that we're doing everything we can to bring scrutiny oversight and accountability in this important area. This is one of the largest shelters in our entire shelter system. So we shortened the amount of the contract to June of 2024, and will require the provider and the department to come back with more updated information and more accurate data. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Supervisor Safaiyi. And seeing no one else on the roster, Madam Clerk, we will take these items same house, same call. Without objection, these resolutions are adopted unanimously. And seeing that it is not quite 3 o'clock, colleagues, I hope you are ready because we will now go to roll call for introductions. Madam Clerk?
First up to introduce new business is Supervisor Dorsey.
Submit.
Submit, thank you. Supervisor Mandelman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have a hearing request, a letter of inquiry, a motion, a drafting request, and an in memoriam. The hearing. Today, I'm calling for a hearing on the Department of Public Health's 2022 Treatment on Demand Report, and I want to thank the cosponsors for this hearing, Supervisor Stephanie, Dorsey, and Ronan. It's been 26 years since San Francisco first established the goal of providing treatment on demand, yet here we are nearly three decades later, and we still haven't gotten ourselves there. Even worse, we aren't even honestly measuring and grappling with the gaps in the system that prevent us from meeting the goal of treatment on demand. Meanwhile, parallel opioid and methamphetamine epidemics have impacted countless lives, with overdose deaths skyrocketing 478% between 2015 and 2020. Treatment on Demand reports mandated by Proposition T in 2008 are due by February 1 every year. This is not a random date. It was chosen to coincide with the annual budget process when departments and the mayor's office are deciding what to prioritize. This will be my third Treatment on Demand hearing since taking office back in 2018. Back then, it was plain that DPH was not taking these reporting obligations seriously and had settled into a habit of submitting one-to-two-page reports that routinely found the city was meeting its Treatment on Demand goals. End of story. Nothing to see here, folks. In the years since then, these reports have gone from bad to better, though lots of important questions remain unanswered by the 2022 report. I remain concerned that we still don't have a clear process for measuring unmet demand despite the Treatment on Demand ordinance requiring each report to include an assessment of the demand for substance abuse treatment and a plan to meet that demand. I understand the report highlights important progress in connecting people to non-medical residential withdrawal management services within 48 hours while they wait for a spot in a 90-day residential treatment program, and that may be an improvement, but a five-to-seven-day wait for admission to a program is clearly not Treatment on Demand. We need to better understand just how many people we're losing as a result of our inability to provide Treatment on Demand, and without this data, a true analysis of just how many more treatment slots are necessary is impossible, and we will keep treading water while the system continues to fail people suffering from addiction. This year's report does highlight several opportunities for improvement, including treatment access for Spanish-speaking clients, people with dual diagnoses, and in custody injustice-involved clients. But the report does not attempt to measure the extent of the gaps for these subpopulations, nor address the policy and budget changes that would be necessary to close those gaps. Last week, Supervisor Stephanie and I joined Supervisor Dorsey in requesting that numerous departments work together on a comprehensive plan to end street-level drug dealing and provide a right to recovery. I strongly support Supervisor Dorsey's efforts in this area, and finally making real San Francisco's long-promised commitment to Treatment on Demand will, in my view, be critical to the success of any such plan. At the same time, the city's failure to successfully implement Treatment on Demand also serves as a cautionary tale. Policies and plans are not enough. Change will require persistent focus from both branches of city government with multiple depart, from multiple departments and from the public. This hearing is part of that project. Treatment on Demand is more important than ever, and San Francisco plainly has lots of work to do. I am also submitting a letter of inquiry to request that by April 1, 2023, the Controller and Treasurer completed analysis of how San Francisco's uneven downtown economic recovery will impact the city's business tax revenue base and recommend priority actions to ensure revenue resilience for future budget cycles. The COVID-19 pandemic has had profound impacts on where office work is performed. Remote and hybrid work became the overnight norm for many industries during the pandemic, vastly accelerating a long-term trend towards more flexible working arrangements between businesses and their employees. These trends have been particularly acute in cities like San Francisco that rely heavily for economic activity and tax revenue on the office sector and have a high concentration of tech, finance, and other professional service industries that have easily adapted to remote work. Last year, San Francisco experienced the largest loss in population of any large city in the country, and recent indicators suggest that our post-pandemic recovery is falling behind our other peer cities. San Francisco's post-pandemic downtown recovery ranks dead last in the nation, according to a recent report from UC Berkeley. Commercial vacancies are at an all-time high while building permits have plummeted. Major tech employers are looking elsewhere for headquarters. Rates of employees returning to the office, air travel, and public transit usage all continue to drag well behind pre-pandemic norms. The long-term persistence of these pandemic shifts are still not entirely clear, but their implications for the city's tax base and tax structure, which is heavily and has become increasingly dependent on revenue from commercial buildings and the businesses filling those buildings, are significant. Business taxes are the city's second-largest individual source of revenue, and any disruption to this revenue base could have a profound impact on future budgets. We, as local policymakers, need to consider how those shifts will impact our tax structure and prepare for those long-term shifts. So today's letter of inquiry asks the Controller and Treasurer to analyze these potential impacts and report back on the magnitude of these economic trends, as well as long-term implications for city revenue, and to provide recommendations regarding the city's tax structure that this Board and the mayor may consider as we emerge from the pandemic. I want to extend special thanks to our city controller, Ben Rosenfield, and our chief economist, Ted Egan, for helping me and my office think through these issues. I also want to acknowledge Supervisor Safaiyi's hearing on downtown recovery, as well as Supervisor Stephanie's prior letter of inquiry in this area, which I am hoping will help inform the analysis that we're asking for today. Next, colleagues, I have previously mentioned that I think it is past time to revisit our remote meeting policies, and today I'm introducing a motion to do that. Up until two thousand and twenty, that's funny seeing the various different, there's a little, there's some applause, some head shaking. Today, I'm introducing a motion to do that. Up until two thousand and twenty, this board conducted all its business in person and without remote participation in our public hearings, except as allowed by the Brown Act and the Sunshine Ordinance. Over the past two-plus years, we have provided for virtual participation out of necessity as in-person gatherings were simply not possible until last summer. I want to commend Clerk Calvio and her excellent team for making remote and now hybrid meetings possible during this entire time without missing a step. And while I know our clerk's office is prepared to continue supporting these meetings and our work regardless of the format, I do think we have to recognize that continuing to allow for unlimited remote public comment, including by callers who have, may have no relationship to San Francisco, comes at a cost, both in terms of resources, but also frankly, in terms of our ability to conduct business effectively. Bearing these costs in mind, colleagues, I think it's appropriate to take a fresh look at remote participation, recognizing how much has changed with the public health situation since the depths of the pandemic. In March, the health officer lifted most indoor masking requirements for public settings, and we resumed in-person public participation at our board and committee hearings. In April, the city administrator lifted remaining indoor mask requirements for city facilities, including City Hall and hearing rooms while in session. And colleagues, it's been over a year now since the state lifted limitations on indoor gatherings, and it's now been over a year since we began meeting again in these chambers. Even as the COVID pandemic continues to evolve, I believe we have more than demonstrated our ability to once again conduct in-person meetings safely. Accordingly, this motion would rescind the motion we passed in March of two thousand and twenty to initiate remote public meetings and would instead require board members to once again be physically present at board and committee meetings, which I will note is already a requirement of our city charter that has only been waived temporarily under the mayor's COVID emergency declaration. This motion would also provide for continued remote public comment, but only as necessary to enable the participation of people with disabilities that make it impractical for them to participate in person. Colleagues, I want to note that last week, we once again renewed for another thirty days the findings required by state law to continue allowing remote participation by board members, which I voted for. However, I'm introducing this motion today so that we can have the space to discuss and consider what the future of remote participation in our proceedings should look like, and I hope make the need for these ongoing resolutions allowing for remote meetings obsolete. I look forward to discussing this more with all of you in the coming weeks. And then, fourplex. As you may recall, at our last meeting before the recess, we addressed the mayor's veto of the fourplex legislation that I have been working toward for over two years and that received the support of the majority of this board. I want to thank you all for the time and thoughtfulness many of you put into this legislation, particularly Chair Melgar and Supervisors Peskin and Preston on the Land Use Committee, as well as Supervisor Marr, who worked with us to make a series of amendments at committee that helped us achieve a consensus on how to allow more housing opportunities in predominantly single-family neighborhoods. As I said then, I'm not done with this conversation. I still believe, and I believe strongly, that we need to create a path to small and medium-sized apartment buildings in parts of the city that haven't historically produced much new housing. Those apartment buildings will not be nearly enough to get us to the eighty-two thousand units that the state expects us to build by two thousand and thirty-one, but they can be part of the answer. To that end, I look forward to working with members of the Land Use Committee and with all of you over the next few weeks to revisit Supervisor Melgar's and my fourplex ordinance, a version of which is still pending at committee. We already know there is majority support on this board for that legislation, and I believe there is a version of it that could get a supermajority and even the mayor to get on board. Colleagues, I would also like to add another element to this conversation, and that is the discussion around streamlining. While voters will be weighing in on streamlining on the November ballot, it strikes me that neither of the measures on the ballot would make it easier to build small-to-mid-scale projects like fourplexes. I think if we're going to take our state-mandated housing goals seriously, that streamlining the approval process for those projects is going to be important, as critical as for larger projects. In fact, HCD's letter to San Francisco announcing a review of our permitting process specifically calls out the need to streamline permitting for projects of five or more units. I also want to note that SB nine, the much-vaunted housing streamlining bill that the mayor cited in her veto message, applies to duplexes and, in some limited cases, to pairs of duplexes where a lot split is possible and the current homeowners promised to remain on-site for three years after construction. So even if you're okay with the state taking over our local zoning, which I am not, SB nine isn't going to make it any easier to build small or medium-sized apartment buildings in San Francisco, which is why, colleagues, I believe it is on us to come up with a local streamlining program for these projects that will make a meaningful difference in getting them built. Accordingly, I am today requesting that the city attorney prepare an ordinance that would streamline the review process for projects that would expand the number of units on a lot under a specific set of constructions, where the project is creating at least four units, where there are no rent-controlled units or eviction history, and where the existing building is not historic. For any project that meets these criteria and meets all our other height, bulk, and open space requirements, I think we should get out of the way and make it as easy as possible for these units to be built. I look forward to advancing that piece of legislation over the coming months, even as our discussion about fourplex and single-family zoning continues. And finally, I'm asking that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Andrew Tonkin. Andy, as he was known to his many friends, a local entrepreneur who lived in the Castro, was a much-beloved presence in San Francisco's gay community. Tragically, he was the victim of a fatal hit-and-run collision in Oakland on August twenty-fifth. He was thirty-five years old. Since moving to San Francisco from the East Coast over a decade ago, Andy, like so many other young gay men from across the country over the last half-century, built a new life for himself here among his chosen family in the queer community. Charismatic and loving, he lit up a room and made everyone he felt he met feel important and welcome, no matter where they were, who they were, or where they were from. He loved a community event or a party, ever eager to bring joy and fun to everyone around him. While he was involved in many organizations and fundraisers, including AIDS Life Cycle, more than anything, Andy was one of those people who simply created community by being there and just by being himself. It is simply heartbreaking that a person who touched so many lives, who was such an outstanding figure in our community, who was so young, could be taken away so suddenly and senselessly by a dangerous driver simply for crossing the street in a crosswalk. I want to share my and our deepest condolences with his many, many friends, his partner, Chris, and his family. Rest in power, Andy Tonkin. May your memory be for a blessing, and the rest, I submit.
Thank you, Supervisor Mandelman. Supervisor Marr. Submit, thank you. Supervisor Melgar. Submit, thank you. Supervisor Peskin.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, I have one request for a hearing as it relates to seven zero six Mission Street, a Millennium-owned property that I believe owes OCII, the successor redevelopment agency, significant amounts of affordable housing dollars that are due and payable but have yet to be paid. I held a hearing on that a year or two back, and those funds pursuant, I believe, to a force-mature COVID extension were delayed and have yet to be forthcoming, so I will be holding a hearing with Supervisor Dorsey on that matter.
Thank you, Supervisor Peskin. Supervisor Dorsey, did you have comments about that? Okay. All right. Moving on to the next supervisor, Supervisor Preston. Submit, thank you. Supervisor Ronan.
Thank you, colleagues. Today, I have one piece of legislation and one hearing request. The legislation will extend and expand the First Year Free Program Ordinance that I sponsored a couple of years ago and that the board unanimously passed last year, or I guess it was last year. Felt like a longer time ago. First Year Free is a program to support and revive San Francisco's small businesses as the city continues to recover from the pandemic. The program weighs the costs of initial registration fees, license fees, first-year permits, and other applicable fees for qualifying businesses. To date, the program has enrolled over sixteen hundred businesses since it began last November. We have heard from many of these small businesses that are grateful for the city's support and looked at ways we can improve upon the successful pilot. The legislation I'm introducing today will extend the qualifying enrollment period through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and expand eligibility so that more small businesses can qualify and benefit from the program. Thank you to the Treasurer and Tax Collector's Office and the Office of Small Business for providing feedback and working with us on this expansion. I also want to thank Anna Herrera from my office. Colleagues, I look forward to your continuing support in this program and look forward to continuing it for another year. Secondly, I'm introducing a hearing request and am requesting that we hear this hearing at the Board of Supervisors and a committee of the whole so that we can look at the impact of Kaiser Permanente's mental health care workers' strike that's been going on now for five weeks and its effects on the employees of the city, which the vast majority of employees of the city are Kaiser patients, and San Francisco's at large. I am calling on the Department of Health Service Systems, the Department of Public Health, to come and report to us, as well as asking the Chief Executive Officer of Kaiser Foundation Health Plan and the Chief Executive Officer of the Permanente Medical Group to attend. The rest, I'll submit.
Thank you, Supervisor Ronan. Mr. President, it's three oh one PM.
Yes, it is. Madam Clerk, can you please call our first three PM special order, items seventeen and eighteen?
Yes. The Board of Supervisors has agreed to convene a committee of the whole for item seventeen. This is a public hearing to consider the renewal of a business-based business improvement district. This is the subject matter of item eighteen, known as the Tourism Improvement District. This public hearing was scheduled pursuant to a resolution number two-nine-eight dash twenty-two, adopted on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Item eighteen specifically is the resolution to establish the Business-Based Improvement District, known as the Tourism Improvement District, to order the levy and collection of assessments against defined hotel and short-term residential rental businesses located in that district for fifteen years to commence January first, two thousand and twenty-four, subject to specified conditions, and to approve modifications to the district management plan and to make the appropriate findings.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The purpose of this hearing is to hear testimony on the proposed levy of assessments for the Business Improvement District, named the Tourism Improvement District, scheduled pursuant to the board's resolution of intention adopted on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. On that date, the Board of Supervisors approved the resolution of intention to renew and expand the Tourism Improvement District. Subsequently, the city mailed ballots to all registered hotel and short-term rental business owners in the city and county of San Francisco. Details of the covered area are in the file. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Department of Elections and Treasurer and Tax Collector will tabulate the ballots and report to the Board of Supervisors. Members of the public may view the ballot tabulation by the Department of Elections on basement level of City Hall in Room fifty-nine. The Board of Supervisors will neither levy the assessments nor approve the renewal and expansion of the district if there is majority protest. After the presentation, we will hear from all speakers in support or opposition to the assessment district, and each person will be provided two minutes to provide comment. During the hearing, a business owner wishing to change their vote or who has not yet voted may speak with the Department of Elections staff at a table just outside of the board chamber. They will provide you with the affidavit and ballot. After the hearing closes, ballots will be counted. Supervisor Peskin, any comments?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. And we do have Chris Korgas with OEWD who will present a PowerPoint presentation. And just to note, also in attendance for question, we have Joe De Alessandro, Greg Cato, Manu Pradhan with the City Attorney's Office, Anne Ann Pearson with the City Attorney's Office, and Dr. Ted Egan. Thank you. Chris?
Thank you, President Walton. Good afternoon, supervisors. Chris Korgas, Program Director with the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. I'd just like to point out that this process to renew and expand the Tourism Improvement District started two weeks right before the COVID-nineteen pandemic and the lockdowns. So I really want to acknowledge and thank the amazing city staff that worked through the pandemic to get us to this point, specifically from the City Attorney's Office, Scott Ryber and Manu Pradhan, from the Office of the Treasurer and Tax Collector, Greg Cato, Amy Dane, Bachi Meg Shagdar Guntev, from the Office of the City Administrator, City Administrator Chu, and Ken Bukowski, from the Office of the Controller, Controller Rosenfield, and Dr. Ted Egan, from the Department of Elections, Juan Quoc, Regan Wang, Alice Law, from the Office of Short-Term Rentals, Diego Sanchez and Scott Sanchez, from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, Alisa Somera and Erica Major, and from the Office of Economic and Workforce Development, Laurel Arventidis, Lisa Pagan, Mimi Haraki, Krizi Atano, Director Sofis, and our former director, Joaquin Torres. If passed, this renewed and expanded Tourism Improvement District will begin services on January first, two thousand and twenty-four, and will sunset on December thirty-first, two thousand and thirty-eight. With me today is Joe De Alessandro, the President and CEO of SF Travel, who will present the brief PowerPoint presentation on the specifics of the renewed and expanded Tourism Improvement District. Thank you.
And President Walton, I should add that I have one technical correction, which I will introduce on page four at section two, that sets forth the correct state provision in the California Streets and Highways Code and removes an incorrect provision elsewhere in the California Government Code.
Thank you, Supervisor Peskin.
President Walton and members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Joe De Alessandro with the San Francisco Travel, and it's my pleasure to be here today to urge your support of the renewal of the San Francisco Tourism Improvement District. The original district was approved thanks to Supervisor Peskin's leadership almost fifteen years ago, and at that point, it was a unique model in the nation. Since then, over a hundred jurisdictions in the state of California alone have passed similar improvement districts to promote their tourism industry. What has this done for San Francisco? Well, it resulted in ten consecutive years of record-breaking growth in visitor spending, in tax collection, and job creation in San Francisco. I've been to two thousand and nineteen when our industry was hit so hard by the pandemic, and we're still in a serious point of trying to recover from that. The Tourism Improvement District has enabled us to do a lot of things. It's enabled us to promote San Francisco on a global scale, on a global stage. It has enabled us to help entice new air service into SFO. It's enabled us to attract new and larger events into San Francisco. It's enabled us to attract conventions that we were not able to accommodate before and to be a more competitive destination in the country and around the world. This renewal is critical. It's critical for the economic recovery of San Francisco and to make sure that tourism continues to be a strong and viable industry for this city and create the jobs that it has created over the past. There will be a few changes in this renewal over the first original district, one of those that will increase assessment rate by a quarter percent. This will enable us to build a fund that we hope to be about a ten million dollars per year to incentivize business to book the Moscone Convention Center. The assessments of this Tourism Improvement District can be passed on to the guests of a hotel or a short-term rental. You'll see on this chart that the assessment rate currently in Zone One hotels, which is the majority of the hotels in the central part of the city, will go from one percent to one point two-five percent, and in Zone Two will go from the current point seven five percent to one percent. What this changes to the plan will allow us to do a couple of things. It will allow us the flexibility to increase the TID assessment by up to one percent in times of critical or unseized circumstances. This is an industry best practice now that has been established since our Tourism Improvement District was established almost fifteen years ago. It will also expand the assessed businesses to include short-term rental hosts who use platforms such as Airbnb, Booking.com, and Expedia. Short-term rentals hosts have not had a voice in the past because this is assessed solely on hotels, but this will enable short-term rentals to be a part of the industry in a more active and proactive way. And we'll also modify the TID MC board composition to include a short-term rental host, to include the city controller, and to include the city administrator. This is important for San Francisco in many ways, but one of the reasons that big conventions and big events are critical for San Francisco is it causes compression. That means that when these large events take up a lot of hotel space in the central part of town, it encourages visitors to expand throughout the neighborhoods, stay in other hotels outside of the downtown business core, and also in short-term rentals outside of the business core to really share the growth and the benefits of tourism spending and job creation around the city. We believe that this Tourism Improvement District renewal is really going to be critical for San Francisco's recovery. We have a long way, we believe, to recover to the place we were in two thousand and nineteen, but without this renewal, we'll feel it would be very difficult to get to that point. I thank you for the time. I thank you for the time and ask if anybody has any questions that I can answer.
Thank you so much, Joe. I don't see anyone on the roster with questions or any concerns. Madam Clerk, we will now open for public comment.
At this time, the Board of Supervisors welcomes your testimony regarding the establishment of the Tourism Improvement District. There will be one public comment period for all speakers who wish to comment on this item. That includes speakers in support of the Assessment District as well as speakers in opposition to the Assessment District. We'll first hear from those who are present in the chamber and then from those who have joined us remotely. To provide remote testimony, you must be connected to the call-in system by dialing the telephone number streaming on your television or computer screen. It's 415-655-0001. When you hear the prompt, enter the meeting ID 24967469953. Press the pound symbol twice, you'll have joined the meeting, you'll hear the discussion, and you'll be in the muted section of the listening queue. But once you are ready to make your comment, press star 3. The system will indicate that you have raised your hand, and please just listen carefully when the system states you've been unmuted. That is your cue to speak your comments. We are joined by our partners from the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs. I ask each interpreter to introduce themselves and the instruction in language on how to connect to the remote system and how to provide public comment. Let's start with Raymond Borres for Filipino, Arturo Casenza for Spanish, and Agnes Lai for Chinese.
[Spanish] Thank you. Buenos dias, mi nombre Arturo Casenza. Soy un empleado de la Oficina de Participación Cívica y Asuntos Immigrantes y estoy prestando servicios de interpretación al español hoy hasta las 7 de la noche para dar su comentario público. Por favor, marque 415-655-0001, seguido por el código de acceso 24967469953, más la tecla de numeral dos veces. Luego presiona este disco 3 y antes de empezar a hablar espera que el sistema le diga que su línea ha sido activada o "you have been unmuted" en inglés. Usted tendrá solo dos minutos para dar su comentario. Gracias.
[Spanish] Buenos dias, mi nombre Arturo Casenza. Soy un empleado de la Oficina de Participación Cívica y Asuntos Immigrantes y estoy prestando servicios de interpretación al español hoy hasta las 7 de la noche para dar su comentario público. Por favor, marque 415-655-0001, seguido por el código de acceso 24967469953, más la tecla de numeral dos veces. Luego presiona este disco 3 y antes de empezar a hablar espera que el sistema le diga que su línea ha sido activada o "you have been unmuted" in inglés. Usted tendrá solo dos minutos para dar su comentario. Gracias.
[Spanish] Buenos dias, mi nombre Arturo Casenza. Soy un empleado de la Oficina de Participación Cívica y Asuntos Immigrantes y estoy prestando servicios de interpretación al español hoy hasta las 7 de la noche para dar su comentario público. Por favor, marque 415-655-0001, seguido por el código de acceso 24967469953, más la tecla de numeral dos veces. Luego presiona este disco 3 y antes de empezar a hablar espera que el sistema le diga que su línea ha sido activada o "you have been unmuted" in inglés. Usted tendrá solo dos minutos para dar su comentario. Gracias.
[Spanish] Buenos dias, mi nombre Arturo Casenza. Soy un empleado de la Oficina de Participación Cívica y Asuntos Immigrantes y estoy prestando servicios de interpretación al español hoy hasta las 7 de la noche para dar su comentario público. Por favor, marque 415-655-0001, seguido por el código de acceso 24967469953, más la tecla de numeral dos veces. Luego presiona este disco 3 y antes de empezar a hablar espera que el sistema le diga que su línea ha sido activada o "you have been unmuted" in inglés. Usted tendrá solo dos minutos para dar su comentario. Gracias.
[Spanish] Buenos dias, mi nombre Arturo Casenza. Soy un empleado de la Oficina de Participación Cívica y Asuntos Immigrantes y estoy prestando servicios de interpretación al español hoy hasta las 7 de la noche para dar su comentario público. Por favor, marque 415-655-0001, seguido por el código de acceso 24967469953, más la tecla de numeral dos veces. Luego presiona este disco 3 y antes de empezar a hablar espera que el sistema le diga que su línea ha sido activada o "you have been unmuted" in inglés. Usted tendrá solo dos minutos para dar su comentario. Gracias.
[Spanish] Buenos dias, mi nombre Arturo Casenza. Soy un empleado de la Oficina de Participación Cívica y Asuntos Immigrantes y estoy prestando servicios de interpretación al español hoy hasta las 7 de la noche para dar su comentario público. Por favor, marque 415-655-0001, seguido por el código de acceso 24967469953, más la tecla de numeral dos veces. Luego presiona este disco 3 y antes de empezar a hablar espera que el sistema le diga que su línea ha sido activada o "you have been unmuted" in inglés. Usted tendrá solo dos minutos para dar su comentario. Gracias.
[Spanish] Buenos dias, mi nombre Arturo Casenza. Soy un empleado de la Oficina de Participación Cívica y Asuntos Immigrantes y estoy prestando servicios de interpretación al español hoy hasta las 7 de la noche para dar su comentario público. Por favor, marque 415-655-0001, seguido por el código de acceso 24967469953, más la tecla de numeral dos veces. Luego presiona este disco 3 y antes de empezar a hablar espera que el sistema le diga que su línea ha sido activada o "you have been unmuted" in inglés. Usted tendrá solo dos minutos para dar su comentario. Gracias.
[Spanish] Buenos dias, mi nombre Arturo Casenza. Soy un empleado de la Oficina de Participación Cívica y Asuntos Immigrantes y estoy prestando servicios de interpretación al español hoy hasta las 7 de la noche para dar su comentario público. Por favor, marque 415-655-0001, seguido por el código de acceso 24967469953, más la tecla de numeral dos veces. Luego presiona este disco 3 y antes de empezar a hablar espera que el sistema le diga que su línea ha sido activada o "you have been unmuted" in inglés. Usted tendrá solo dos minutos para dar su comentario. Gracias.
[Spanish] Buenos dias, mi nombre Arturo Casenza. Soy un empleado de la Oficina de Participación Cívica y Asuntos Immigrantes y estoy prestando servicios de interpretación al español hoy hasta las 7 de la noche para dar su comentario público. Por favor, marque 415-655-0001, seguido por el código de acceso 24967469953, más la tecla de numeral dos veces. Luego presiona este disco 3 y antes de empezar a hablar espera que el sistema le diga que su línea ha sido activada o "you have been unmuted" in inglés.
Our market segment in the work of bringing visitors to San Francisco. I really do want to give credit to SF Travel and Joe DeLisandro and his team and Paul and Cassandra, who really have worked hard on a very complicated process and were very inclusive of short-term rental hosts to make sure they understood it, learned about it, and embraced this opportunity to be part of this work. So really appreciative of all their efforts. Many of our short-term rental hosts, along with many other industry sectors, suffered during COVID as we all did. And we've continued to work with SF Travel for many years on programs to get our hosts out into neighborhoods, to appreciate the different areas, to recommend them to guests visiting the city. And we look forward to being part of this TID and to continuing to work with SF Travel and other community organizations and some of your offices to really continue to be supportive of the recovery of San Francisco in the wake of COVID, particularly our tourist sector, which is so important. So again, thank you. We respectfully urge your support and look forward to continuing to work together towards San Francisco's recovery in the years ahead. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Matt Middlebrook, for your comments. May we have the next speaker?
Hi, my name is Jonathan Burbaum. President Walton and members of the board. I also am a short-term rental host, and I'm not going to go through the points that my previous folks. I do support the expansion of the TID, and I would encourage you to do so. But I would also encourage you to recognize that short-term rentals are not hotels. We're not treated like hotels. We are only hotels when we're considered to be unhosted. So and also hotels are assessed only on their room rates. And I think a fairer way of handling this would be to consider unhoused stays only or to expand the amount that is assessed against hotels to include all of their benefits, including the restaurants and so forth. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. To members of the public, if the audible sounds of appreciation are prohibited here, if you could just use your supportive fingers, that would be great. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I am Michael Dineye. I'm a short-term rental host, and I would be in support of passing the TID if it were for one exception, and I'd like the board to consider this. There is a huge amount of administrative overhead for us smaller hosts, especially one property kinds of hosts. So between the supplemental property tax on business equipment, your regular property tax, STR quarterly reporting, and then also doing all of your regular tax filing and stuff like that, it's a lot of administration. So if there would be a way that we could file it electronically, like we do with our TOT taxes, it would really help to reduce that administrative overhead. Another concept or idea that you could present is that this is a very small amount of tax. And anybody who does efficiencies in AP and AR departments, those that every time you touch a payment, you're losing money. And so one of the concepts you could look at would be to just include a flat rate STR per year, like $500 per year, and then STR could divvy that money up to where it belonged instead of piecemealing all of these things. So right now, at this point, I have like six different logins and passwords, and they're all due at different times. And so as a person, I'm a high school Spanish teacher, and I just had a kid six weeks ago. So I have very few brain cells left. So anything that you can do to make my life easier in this aspect would really be welcome. So that's my only comment.
Thank you so much, Michael, for your comments. May we have the next speaker?
Good afternoon, President Walton and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Teri Lewis, and I'm the complex general manager of the Hiltons of San Francisco Union Square. I have the Hilton on O'Farrell and the Park 55 Hotel. It's 3,000 rooms and about 1,500 hard-working team members. So I'm here today to support the renewal of the San Francisco Tourism Improvement District. The TID is essential in our ability to promote San Francisco as a global destination and bring back the visitors that our city depends on. This recovery is critical. In fact, tourism generated over $819 million in taxes and fees for the city's general fund in 2019, and the industry employed over 86,000 jobs. Tourism was San Francisco's number-one economy, and in order to bring that back, we need to ensure that the TID is renewed and that our business and leisure visitors come back to San Francisco to support our accommodations, restaurants, attractions, and cultural institutions. And if we do this, more people will be working here in San Francisco. Thank you for your time today and for the opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you, Teri Lewis, for your comments. May we have the next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, President Walton and members of the SF Board of Supervisors. My name is Stefan Mülle. I am the Vice President and Regional Managing Director at Noble House Hotels, which includes the Argonaut Hotel and Hotel Zoe here in San Francisco. I'm also the past Chair of the Tourism Improvement District Management Corporation Board of Directors. I'm here to express my support for the renewal of the Tourism Improvement District. The TID has transformed how San Francisco competes against comparable destinations for leisure and business travel. Since the TID went into effect in 2009, it has generated over $20 million each year prior to the pandemic that's used to market and sell San Francisco, attracting leisure and business visitors globally. The TID has enabled us to greatly expand our marketing reach, bringing visitors into our unique and diverse neighborhoods and neighborhood commercial corridors, supporting small businesses and creating jobs. The TID renewal has been thoughtfully crafted and vetted, and renewing the TID is an essential step to our economic recovery. Thank you so much for your time and for your support in this important initiative. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your comments. May we have the next speaker, please?
President Walton, esteemed supervisors, fellow San Franciscans. I'm here on behalf of the Hotel Council. My name's Alex Bastian, and I'm the President. And it's my honor to be here before you to talk about something that's so important. Now, we're at a pivotal moment in our city's history, and I believe that if we all work together, we can accomplish great things. And one of the key areas where we can accomplish great things together, a consensus, if you will, is our tourism industry. And the reason for that is because when the tourism industry shines, we all shine. The industry shines, our workers shine, the tax base grows, and San Franciscans benefit. Makes it something that we can all be proud of, our city, our values, who we are as San Franciscans. And it's why I'm here before you today in support of this TID renewal and expansion, because doing so helps our city with the vital resources it needs in order to expand tourism, in order for all of us to be proud of our city and to help our tax base grow. With that, I just want to thank you all for your time and your diligent thoughts and consideration on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex Bastian, for your comments. May we have the next speaker?
Hello to the board and to fellow citizens of San Francisco. My name is Lyle Sweeney, and I am a short-term host. And I'm here to speak on behalf of my guests, who complain chronically about the homelessness, the human waste in the street, and the disposed needles. This box of needles is collected from the children's playground one block from my house. So I may have the minority view here, but I'm not in support of adding any more money until we see action to clean up the city and make it more presentable. I probably should have been here earlier during the other conversation with the mayor. But I do ask what really is being improved. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lyle Sweeney, for your comments. Let's have the next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Dr. Carol Tang, and I'm the Executive Director of the Children's Creativity Museum in the beautiful Yurba Wena Gardens, next to the children's playground. I am speaking today in support of renewal of the San Francisco TID. I'm also a new board member of the San Francisco TID. When we benefit tourists and make the city accommodating and welcoming for tourists, we also increase the quality of life for our residents who choose to live here in this beautiful city. So the children and families, the seniors who live across the street from my museum, they benefit when tourists come and make this a vibrant place. In addition to the assessed businesses, nonprofit cultural and arts organizations like my own also benefit. In 2019, we had about a quarter of a million riders on the historic Leroy King Carousel. We had about 120,000 visitors to the museum and theater. Many of those are tourists, and their dollars, their admission, helps us support our access programs. Half of our field trips were free to SFUSD. And today, 30% of our visitors actually come for free through the San Francisco Museums for All program. As long as they show an EBT card, Medi-Cal, Medicare, WIC card, they and their entire family get to ride the carousel and come to the museum for free. One other last, unappreciated benefit of tourism I strongly believe in is our ability to influence the rest of the world. At a time where tolerance, equity, diversity, and inclusion is much sorely needed around the world, I often hear parents at our museum comment about how beautiful it is to see kids of all races, abilities, genders, and backgrounds play, imagine, create together. They're building the world we want to see in the future. And if we can bring more tourists to San Francisco who can appreciate what we have here, we're able to export those values, those San Francisco values, to beyond just our own neighborhood. And therefore, I urge you to support the renewal of the SF TID.
Thank you, Dr. Tang. May we have the next speaker, please?
All right, good afternoon, President Walton, members of the board. Hello, great to see you. My name is Ike Kwan. I'm here representing the SF Travel Board. I serve as Chair, and I also am at the California Academy of Sciences. And I'm here to ask your support for renewing the TID. It's super important, obviously, for tourism. This past weekend, a bunch of us went back to my old hometown, Chicago, to try and woo back some of the conferences and conventions that used to come here. And I'm not going to lie, I'm not sad that the Niners lost to the Chicago Bears. But it did upset me that Chicago's recovery is going more quickly than San Francisco. And so certainly, the TID is very, very important. As a former hotel banker waiter all through school, the TID supports over 86,000 jobs. And as Teri Lewis mentioned before, a lot of tax revenue for city services. So thank you for your attention to this, and we ask for your support. Thanks.
Please escort him out of the chamber for that Niner comment.
President Walton, supervisors, thank you so much for the time this afternoon. I am a Seahawks fan. I'll go right after Ike. My name is John Anderson. I'm the General Manager of the San Francisco Marriott Marquis, a proud resident of District 10, and also the current Chair of the TID MC. I am here, obviously, in support of the expansion and renewal of the TID. As you heard from Joe DeLisandro, this concept is no longer unique to San Francisco. This is a very competitive environment for conventions and groups and tourism. And obviously, the expansion is going to give SF Travel the tools they need to keep San Francisco competitive, keep all of our associates working. My 1,500-room property employs about 800 people when it's at capacity. I can sadly tell you right now, it's not at capacity. The TID renewal will give the funds to SF Travel to ensure that the vitality of the downtown San Francisco area, the convention center, as well as our associates, continue to work and be employed. We appreciate the time and the support of the tourism industry in San Francisco, and thank you very much for consideration of expansion. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Let's have the next speaker, please.
I'm Ding Ma, and I speak in favor of the renewal and expansion of the TID. As a semi-retired host in District 5, soon D2, I am aware of the importance of well-organized touristic services. Short-term rentals in private homes alongside the host allow low-budget travelers to enjoy our city. In areas where the hotel industry is not present, we fulfill an important social function. In addition, I get frequently positive feedback by small businesses, such as store and restaurants, example, The Brandas, No Palito, BBQ, Beretta, Otomet, Kong Food, Mongolia, The Fly, Barrel Head, and also coffee shops such as Oasis, The Mill, Matching Half, Pete's, and Aldis Central Coffee. And it's great that STR should be now represented on the travel board. It seems to me that San Francisco has come a long way since Proposition F seven years ago and adjusted to a more integrated system of tourism. I support the measure of the Tourism Improvement District. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Let's have the next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, President Walton and supervisors. My name is Sylvie Elliott. I'm another fellow host, just adding another little comfort and support. My place, I'm in West Laurapack Heights. I'm actually supposedly in Presidio Heights, but I'm not, so it can be confusing. But I also do offer affordable accommodations to all sorts of people, techies who just want to work from a different place and who will enjoy restaurants, grandparents of people who have kids and would like to explore our parks with their grandchildren, or the Discovery Museum, or the Museum of Science, people who just want to enjoy Golden Gate Park, Golden Gate Bridge, and Chrissy Field. And then also, I'm not so far from USF, and I get a lot of family coming to visit their children and wants to take them out. So I also want to tell you that I'm a medical assistant and that as much as I feel I offer benefit from a cheaper room, the guests, interns, let me live here in San Francisco, so we very much appreciate one another. Like another host, I also counsel them on safety and on everything there is to do. So I hope you can vote for the expansion of the TID. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvie Elliott, for your comments. Let's have the next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Marsha Madrigal, and I'm out in the Outer Richmond. And I'm near the Cliff House that no longer is open, and also Louise, which is no longer open. And I voted no on the renewal because I don't see any benefit for the area that I host. Since the pandemic has kind of passed away, I have always been booked. The whole month of October is booked, and I don't have any problems seeing that fixing the Misconi Center and putting all that money down there is going to help me in the Outer Richmond. And so I'm sorry, until I see something. I do like the idea that you're putting finally somebody to represent the people who do Airbnb, because in the past, I felt like we're completely, nobody likes us, they hate us, we can't talk about what we do. So I'm glad about that, but I don't feel like giving any more money because I don't see any benefits for what is being offered here, except for big, giant hotels. And how can we compete? And it also looks like you're taking 1% for us and only 1.25% for them, who have like 3,000 hotel rooms versus one room. I mean, that is a lot to take in. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha Madrigal, for your comments. Let's have the next speaker, please.
My name is Blair Jeffress. I am a short-term rental host since 2018. It provides very meaningful sorts of income for me and my family. I'm grateful for the opportunity to host a short-term rental in San Francisco. I'm not able to support the assessment because I think I don't have enough information to make a decision about it. I'll start with, for example, the information I received about the proposed TID assessment and what my actual assessment would be. The amount of eligible net revenue used in the assessment is much different than the amount I would have expected based on the description of the formula to be used. So I'm left to wonder, well, how much am I actually going to be paying? What should I expect? I have no idea. It's literally a difference of probably a multiple of two or more. So that's an example of information I do not have. And then in general, I would say there are questions about transparency and accountability. Before I make any decisions about the way that I will fund programs, either in my personal life or businesses, there's a set of questions that I need to be able to answer in order to decide to allocate funds. And perhaps some of these questions would be answered in what I believe is referred to as the Management District Plan. I understand that this is available in the Clerk's office in a physical form. Could it be possible to make this available in a digital form? Do I really have to come down to the Clerk's office in order to review this plan? I, again, don't actually know if this information would be contained in the report. Some of the information I would expect to get in order to make a decision about an assessment such as this is an analysis of past results generated by the TID. How was the money actually spent? What results were achieved? I would like to see specific examples of that. I know there was an attempt with sort of a slide here today to say that these things were done, but I think we can get in more detail with the NAT in terms of the results that have been achieved. Also, has there been a focus on business travel or tourists?
Thank you so much for your comments. Let's have the next speaker, please.
Hi to everybody. My name is Murad Birami. I'm new to all this, feeling new in this country. So I'm a short-term host here. Maybe some other kind of perspective will help. I really came here thinking that's with high expectations. I came in the best city with very high developed tourism. And you have my support in renewal in everything you do, but I'm not sure how much you can do with all this, what I found for short-term here being limitations, incapacities of certain authorities. Where are we going with this tourism? We have so many homeless people incapable to solve that problem, and you put so many legislative limitations on short-term rentals and other people. Just look at that. I can't rent for more than 90 days per year. What are you thinking, helping maybe long-term tenants? No way. I mean, there's so many other things you can change if you want, really, to make something better. Because it seems to me, when I moved from post-communist country here, I came in a free, nice country, and it is really beautiful. But I found that this city especially, especially the housing, that's implemented so good Marxism and Leninism like no communist country in the world did. I have experience from this, and I think you can do a lot to change these things and make the city the most beautiful and best and developed everything in all area you can. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you so much for your comments. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Hi, my name is Sarah Bitten, and I'm homeless. I'm at the Good Hotel, where I'm called Bs and Fs every night, yelled, "Get the hell out of here, bitch, I'm a snitch." I'm asking the government to please return my Wells Fargo Bank Visa so I can rent a room outside of the Good Hotel, which is dangerous inside. I haven't received my immunity pension since February, and I can't even get inside the building to get my--
My apologies. This is actually public comment for the hearing. In place, we will have public comment later on for general public comment. But right now, this is specific to the hearing.
All right. Okay, well, I would like my Wells Fargo Bank Visa back. Please return it back.
Thank you so much, and we will have time for general public comment later in the meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, seeing no other speakers here in the room, we will be switching over to the remote queue. Today, we have Mr. Kevin Lamb from the Clerk's office. He's checking to see if we have any remote attendees. If you called in earlier on the phone and you have not already done so, please press star three and wait until the system indicates you have been unmuted, and that will be a cue to begin your comments. Mr. Lamb, do we have any callers in the queue?
Yes, good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Lori Thomas. I'm the Executive Director of the Golden Gate Restaurant Association, and I'm calling just to strongly urge that you approve the renewal and expansion of the Tourism Improvement District. Stand by our hospitality partners. As you guys know, our restaurants and bars have just been estimated to go in the downtown economic core of the city. And putting money and working with SF Travel in this renewal of the TID is so important for our ability to recover, regain our share, and to drive visitors, both business and leisure, to come back, enjoy our city and our restaurants, and help our staff have hours to work, make money. And so we really appreciate everybody coming together. We're excited about it expanding and including our Airbnb and our other hosting platforms. And we just want to strongly support this and thank everybody for all the really hard work that's been done on this. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Lori Thomas, for your comments. We have 22 listening and three left in the queue. Mr. Lamb, could you put the next caller forward?
Good afternoon, President Walton and members of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. My name is Karina Luna, and I'm the General Manager of Taj Kempton Place Hotel, located at Union Square. I'm here to urge you to support the renewal of the Tourism Improvement District. The proposed renewal has been well-vetted and thoughtfully crafted to achieve maximum benefits for the assessed businesses. It is imperative to the lifeblood of the tourism industry in San Francisco to put all possible efforts behind destination marketing and tourism promotion in order to combat the constant barrage of negative press the city faces. The TID also supports our workforce and our small business sector that rely on these visitors to support their operations. In fact, pre-pandemic, tourism supported over 86,000 jobs and brought in well over $750 million in taxes to support essential city services. We are still behind in our recovery due to the pandemic, and we need the TID now more than ever to bring back visitors to our beautiful city and support our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Karina Luna. All right, Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Good afternoon, President Walton and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Matt Humphreys, and I'm the Area Vice President and General Manager of the Hyatt Regency of San Francisco. I also, for the past two years, served as the Chair of the Finance Committee of the Tourism Improvement District Management Corporation Board of Directors. I'm here today to support the renewal of the Tourism Improvement District. The TID has a strong footprint in what has been a 10-year tourism growth pre-COVID for San Francisco. In 2019, we welcomed 26 million visitors from all around the world, and those visitors spent over $10 billion supporting our small businesses, our essential services, and thousands of jobs, including over 400 that worked at this hotel at that time. And much like my colleague from the Marriott stated, we're not back to 400 yet, and we need to get there to support our staff. Let's continue with this recovery, support travel and tourism, and renew the TID. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today.
Thank you, Matt Humphreys, for your comments this afternoon. All right, Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Hello?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Matt Kuhta. I am third generation, born and raised in San Francisco. I'm the real deal. I've been listening to all this stuff today. And basically, I use Airbnb for a little bit of supplemental income. But this is a whole scam. This is a whole San Francisco policy scam. We've been here forever, three generations. It's just another taxation to justify this group that basically serves the hotel community. Look at the whole Board of Directors of the TID. They're all on the big hotels. And I'm in the camp with the last two speakers, the individuals, my lady from the Richmond District, and my man who said, where's the transparency? Where's the proof that all this taxation is benefiting me? I'm in North Beach. I've been in the city forever. I went to FI three generations. San Francisco doesn't need any advertising. If you want to help the people in Balboa Park, Excelsior, Ingleside, Sunset, those other districts, put your money there. But taxing the people downtown where everyone already knows about? Pathetic. Literally pathetic. Kill this freaking commission and go to work and do something proper. Deal with the homeless, clean up the poop. That's what I got. This is a joke. That's what I got. And Pesci, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. I'll see you in North Beach later. Goodbye.
All right, Matt. So I'm going to interrupt you all. If you'd like to provide support, you should provide your support showing your supportive hands. Thank you. All right, is there another caller in the queue, Mr. Lamb? All right.
Hi, my name is Amin Glotzer. I live in--
I live in Noe Valley, and I am an Airbnb host. I am also a senior on a fixed income, and Airbnb has changed my life to make my retirement much easier for me. So I don't really understand why I have to lose more money at this time when I don't really understand what you're going to do with the money that you're collecting from us. And I feel a possibility it's just going to pay for somebody's wages. My guests have come here from all over, even Europe, and they have heard about our homeless problem. So it feels like if you really want to attract tourists, there are other things you can do, and dealing with the homeless problem would be a place to start. Thank you for listening to me, and I will be curious to see what you decide in the future.
Thank you, Aileen Glotzer, for your comments this afternoon. We do have 20 members of the public who are listening. If you're one of the 20 and you'd like to provide comment this afternoon, you should press star three now. Otherwise, we're going to take this group to the end. Mr. Lamb, let's hear from our next caller, please.
Madam Clerk, there are no more callers in the queue.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lamb. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And to the public, public comment is now closed. Supervisor Peskin.
Thank you, President Walton. I would just like to formally make the aforementioned amendment at section two, page four, line 10, 11, and 12, to strike the incorrect language. All of you are in receipt of a copy of this. That would be striking section 4E of article 13D of the California Constitution, section 53753 of the California Government Code, and replace that with section 36623 subsection B of the California Streets and Highways Code.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Peskin, there's a motion to amend. Do we have a second? Seconded by Supervisor Safaii. Just real quick, too, before we go to the to the motion and to my colleagues, would you like to close the hearing, Supervisor Peskin?
So moved.
Thank you so much. This 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 hearing has been held and is now filed. Supervisor Dorsey.
Thank you, President Walton. I want to thank my colleague Supervisor Peskin for his groundbreaking leadership on this, and I recall him working on this back in 2008 when I worked on the other side of the building. As many of you know, I represent a district that's almost wholly contained within zone one, and it plays an outside outsized role in welcoming visitors to our city, especially Moscone Center. I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to incentivize visitors and conventions to our city at the high point of the tourism industry, I think as many of the callers mentioned. You know, I for the two years that I worked in the police department, there was a lot of work that we did with, you know, the conventions and places that were considering whether to come to San Francisco. And I know the numbers by heart. At the high point of our tourism industry in 2019, we had 26 million visitors. That's roughly equivalent to the state of Texas. It's $10.3 billion that was spent here to really help our economy, and it also provides for 86,000 jobs. So I want to thank OEWD and Chris Corgus and everybody there and that whole team and Supervisor Peskin and his team. And Madam Clerk, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to the next item.
Thank you, Supervisor Dorsey. Supervisor Safaii?
Thank you, Supervisor Peskin, for putting this forward today and having this hearing. I just wanted to say thank you to the San Francisco Travel, the Hotel Council, and Office of Economic and Workforce Development. We're able to meet with them prior to the break and discuss the importance of renewing this tourist improvement district. Now more than ever, we need to be working together to ensure and enhance and attract more people to our city, to get people back to work, to help our hotels and our hotel industry and our service workers recover. The renewal of the TID is a really important step to protect our tourism industry and ensure that visitors and guests and get the customer service and experience they deserve. We're hearing a lot of frustration lately about the conditions of our street, the safety, the crime, and some of the other issues that have been plaguing our city over the last few years. We need to honestly have a plan. We need to address them, and we need to address them in an honest way, and this is a really important step in the right direction. So I want to thank everyone that came out today, speaking from their own personal experiences. I know that this is one of the industries that was the hardest hit over the last two years, so anything we can do to help them to recover. And at the end of the day, appreciate Airbnb coming today and also saying that they want to do their fair share and participate in the recovery of the city and participate in this overall structure and system. Thanks Supervisor Peskin to leading on this renewal and expansion, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Safaii. Supervisor Chan?
Thank you, President Walton. I, while I do appreciate the expansion of this district to include short-term rental, I actually do echo, and I really want to thank some of my constituents from the Richmond District that came out, because I want to echo their sentiment as well, and I look forward to seeing, you know, in the benefit zone two and seeing that, you know, with this expansion, that there's also a consideration for a website improvement. I do think that, you know, other than the, of course, we want our downtown to thrive, but to really take a step back, to really city, looking at the city as a whole, that tourism, what bring people to San Francisco is not just our downtown, but truly is, you know, we do see Golden Gate Park, we do see, you know, some of the great neighborhoods that in on the website that also bring people out for both domestic tourism and international tourism. So I really do look forward to seeing some of those benefits expanded as well, just as we expand the tax district. Thank you, President Walton.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Chan. I don't see anyone else on the roster. Madam Clerk, we have a motion to amend item 18 made by Supervisor Peskin and seconded by Supervisor Safaii.
On the motion to amend item 18, Supervisor Dorsey. Dorsey, aye. Supervisor Mandelman, aye. Supervisor Marr, aye. Marr, aye. Supervisor Melgar, aye. Melgar, aye. Supervisor Peskin, aye. Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan, aye. Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safaii, aye. Safaii, aye. Supervisor Stephanie, aye. Supervisor Walton, aye. Walton, aye. And Supervisor Chan, aye. Chan, aye. There are 11 ayes.
Thank you. Motion to continue carries unanimously. The ballots will now be tabulated, and we will return to item number 18 after the Department of Elections reports the results, and the members may provide additional comments at that time if they wish. Madam Clerk, would you please call our second 3:00 p.m. special order?
Yes, Mr. President, and just for our record, I just want to indicate that you indicated that the item was continued, but I think the language was the item was amended and would be then continued to later in the meeting.
My apologies. Amended and continued. Yes, ma'am.
Continually, okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
So the second 3:00 p.m. special order is the Board of Supervisors sitting as a committee of the whole. This is item 19, scheduled pursuant to a motion that was approved on May 24, 2022, and continued from June 14, 2022. This is a public hearing of the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing on the Laguna Honda Hospital's strategy for recertification and the submission of a closure and patient transfer and relocation plan, and requesting the Department of Public Health to present.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, we have before us a committee of the whole on Laguna Honda Hospital's strategy for recertification and the submission of a closure and patient transfer and relocation plan. Supervisor Melgar.
Thank you so much, President Walton, and thank you, colleagues, for hearing this again and hearing the update of our Department of Public Health's progress on the ongoing situation at Laguna Honda. The last time that we had a hearing as a committee of the whole was before we got the reprieve from CMS on the terrible consequences of the transfer and relocation plan that we were being forced to follow at Laguna Honda. And so I I'm very grateful that we were able to work with advocates and our federal legislation, and I'm grateful for Mayor Breed's efforts to, you know, make folks realize what a terrible plan this was and the terrible consequences this was having on the patients and their families, as well as the totally unnecessary anxiety that it was creating with the very dedicated staff, members of FSIU 1021, and the families of the folks who live at Laguna Honda and are being treated there. So but we're not out of the woods, so the reprieve takes us until the end of the year. This hearing will update us on what's going on right now. What are the plans? What has happened with CMS? What we have done in terms of the surveys that have happened at Laguna Honda to set us up, to put our best foot forward in the recertification process? And what we can expect after the end of the year, when we need to come up with some different arrangement with CMS to keep the Medicare payments going, if we still haven't gotten to the point where we can achieve recertification? A new issue that has come up from constituents, and some of you may have gotten emails and phone calls about this, is the issue of the renewal of our license with the state, because that is also attached to a number of beds that we have in the census. And so I have asked Mr. Pickens to also update us on that, because it's very important. And I am looking forward to hearing about the situation, the progress that we've made, and to chart out a plan for a successful resolution of the situation at Laguna Honda so that we may sustain this very important institution that districts have in for many, many generations to come. Thank you, President Walton.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Melgar. And now I would like to invite Ronald Pickens, who is the interim CEO of Laguna Honda Hospital, to present. Mr. Pickens.
Good afternoon, President Walton and members of the board. I'm Roland Pickens, interim chief executive officer at Laguna Honda Hospital, and I'm joined again today with my colleague, Dr. Wilmy Hathaway, who is the chief medical officer at Laguna Honda Hospital. So it's our privilege to come to you a little over a month since our last visit and provide you with an update on the situation at Laguna. First slide. Okay. One more. So as you know, Laguna Honda has been an integral part of San Francisco for the past 150 years, and we serve approximately 700 residents and patients. We care for some of the most medically complex individuals in need of skilled nursing and rehabilitation care, and we offer many signature programs that are not offered at any other skilled nurse facility. We have specialization in monolingual care in Spanish and Chinese, in palliative care, and we offer the only AIDS/HIV SNF unit in the Bay Area. And we also have a specialization in memory care. Next slide. All hospitals in California are required to report many different types of incidents that occur within the facility. In the summer of 2021, Laguna did just that. There were cases of two Laguna Honda patients who actually had gone out on day pass into the community and returned to Laguna and suffered drug overdoses. Luckily, staff were able to reverse those overdoses, and those patients survived and were okay. In the midst of that of making that report, the State of California Department of Public Health came out and conducted a series of different surveys to address findings related not only to that case but to other observations they made while at Laguna. There were a series of surveys, five to eight subsequent follow-up surveys, getting down to around April of this year, in which there was one final survey where the state came to Laguna and actually found no deficits related to their initial findings regarding those cases of overdose. But they did find new findings, particularly in the areas of hand hygiene, infection control, the types of deficits you might find in any facility. Normally, in on the normal situations, there would have been enough time for Laguna to complete what's called a plan of correction, where mitigating factors are put into place, submitted to the state. They in turn give comment and eventually, at some point, approve that plan. But unfortunately, because the clock had started six months earlier, there was not time to remedy those more basic deficiencies, and thus CMS indicated they were required statutorily to end Laguna's participation in the CMS program due to not having each and every area of deficit resolved by that April 14 six-month deadline that actually started six months prior in October. You know, that was a significant event for the institution. It basically, it essentially meant that our major funding source, Medicaid and Medicare funds, to the tune of half a million dollars a day, are roughly $200 million in annual revenue to Laguna from federal sources. From that very first day of decertification, it became clear what our priority would be at Laguna Honda, and that was to immediately begin the daunting process of re-establishing certification with CMS, the Federal Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services. We immediately got to work on developing milestones and an action plan that had at their heart the need to do both some short and also long-term operational and structural and cultural changes at Laguna to make sure Laguna was in the best position to meet CMS regulatory requirements. To that end, we brought onboard consultants in mid in the mid middle of May. These consultants were experts in both skilled nursing facility operations and also in public healthcare operations. The consultants conducted an initial assessment of Laguna Honda, particularly in terms of its areas of non-compliance with CMS regulations, made some initial recommendations and changes, many of which, all of which have actually been implemented, and in addition, are in the process of doing a second, more comprehensive, top-to-bottom assessment of Laguna, which we expect to see the results of that assessment later on this fall. We however, we are confident that with the expertise of these consultants, combined with many of the staff who have been redeployed from other parts of the Department of Public Health and the city to support Laguna in this effort, that we will be successful when we do submit for Medicaid and Medi-Cal recertification. Next slide. So I want to take a little time to particularly refresh you and bring you back up to speed in terms of many of the developments that happened during the month of August while you were on recess. You'll recall that when the decertification occurred, as Supervisor Melgar mentioned, Laguna was mandated to develop, submit for CMS approval, and then finally implement a mandatory patient transfer, discharge, and closure plan. You'll recall that the plan submitted by Laguna Honda and the city showed that, given the complexity of our patients, the almost 700 patients that we had at Laguna, it would take us approximately 18 months to effectively implement the plan that they were requiring. When we submitted that plan, CMS rejected that 18-month transfer discharge plan and instead mandated that we do what- and instead mandated that we do what should take 18 months in only four months, have that done by September 13th. So CMS approved that four-month plan on May 14th. We immediately began to implement that plan in terms of doing assessments of all those patients, beginning making referrals to other skilled nursing facilities and discharges to other, either home or board and care levels of care. We implemented that plan for about two months. And many of you saw the results and the impact that had not only on the patients, the families, the staff, but the entire San Francisco and Bay Area community. Luckily, after two months of implementing that plan on July 28th, CMS and the state agreed to a request by the city to enact an immediate pause on doing any additional transfers or discharges. You'll recall by that time, we'd actually discharged 57, 57 patients during that two-month period. And then during August, we were pleased to, through the city attorney's office, reach an agreement with CMS and California Department of Public Health to extend that temporary pause an additional few months until November 13th. And that the pause would also ensure continued funding to Laguna through November 13th. And we saw that as a great temporary win. It allowed us to, number one, maintain the financial integrity of the hospital so that we can continue to provide for the patients who were there. But it also, more importantly, allowed us to stop fighting, what I call a battle on two fronts. You know, we were both doing significant efforts in terms of the closure plan, trying to refer these patients. But at the same time, we had an equal amount of work effort going towards recertification for fixing all of those deficits and regulatory compliance. So again, I have equated it to the staff to say we were fighting two battles. So now, at least through November 13th, we're fighting one battle. And that battle is recertification. But again, this pause has helped us because it's allowed us to use the resources that we have with a singular focus towards fixing those areas of non-compliance along with our consultants and our staff. Next slide. So again, from the very beginning of decertification, we said that our number one goal was recertification. And bringing those two consulting firms onboard was the first big step. They've made tremendous impact, both in terms of bringing expertise to Laguna, but also resources to Laguna. Next slide. You'll recall that we previously shared with you our milestones and a timeline towards getting back into CMS compliance and certification. The first big milestone was to conduct what's called a mock survey. And this is really common within the hospital healthcare industry. And think of it as a pre-test when we were all in school. But basically, in a mock survey, you simulate the actual survey process that the regulator will employ when they come to your facility. So utilizing our consultants, they actually simulated, and it ended during the week of July 21st, our first mock survey. They used the actual tools that the CMS surveyors are going to use when they come to Laguna. And it did an assessment of the entire Laguna Honda operation. As planned, that mock survey identified, again, many of the issues that had previously been identified by the state, particularly deficits in terms of infection control, hand hygiene, PPE, the ability of the nursing units to be in good repair. Subsequent to that, as with any survey, we then initiated plans of correction. We worked with our team, with our staff. We actually brought, we set up what we called Plans of Correction Summits. These were all-day events where we had frontline staff who actually do the work, along with their supervisors and managers, who got in the room and went over each of those areas of deficit finding and said, what do we at Laguna need to do in order to fix these areas and come into compliance? And this is what you have to do actually during the survey process. We did that, submitted those to the consultants who were acting as CMS surveyors. They made comments, some areas we had to change, but they eventually approved that plan of correction. And we are moving forward with a little over 100 different plans of correction in order to address those various issues, like making sure crash carts are checked appropriately, making sure medication is stored appropriately, making sure staff are appropriately washing their hands, both when they go into a patient's room and when they leave a patient's room, that they're not wearing gloves in the hallway when they shouldn't be. All of those things are somewhere within the over 200 federal rules and regulations regarding skilled nursing facilities. So the good news is, we did the first mock survey. We identified what those deficits are. We are currently implementing those plans of correction. And you'll recall in that milestone document, it said that we would implement those changes, give them a few weeks to make sure that we can validate that the changes have been sustained and that they're continuing to work. And then we're going to do a second mock survey. Again, we want to make sure when we actually submit that paperwork to CMS that we're going to be successful. So we're doing a second pre-test. Right now, we're onboard. We're on schedule to have that second mock survey occur sometime in the month of October. And that's key because that second mock survey, when we get the results of that, will then really let us know, are we ready to submit to CMS and be successful in the actual CMS certification? And in terms of those milestones, first mock survey, second mock survey, the other significant milestone was we, that we had, was a massive recertification training effort. Next slide. So from that first mock survey, the consultants actually looked at all of the areas of deficit and developed a tailor-made curriculum for Laguna Honda. It was not a curriculum that was off the shelf that you could buy anywhere. They looked at all those areas of deficit finding within the mock survey and developed a curriculum to train and retrain our staff on those areas of non-compliance. This all occurred during the month of August. There were a series of four cohorts and stretched over a four-week period. We've trained over almost 1,200 Laguna Honda staff, myself. I've gone through the training, so has Dr. Hathaway. Our physicians, our porters, our dietary staff, everyone who's a part of the Laguna Honda care team is required to go through this. We are almost at 100% compliance. We had a few staff who were on leave or out. And so they're actually going through the makeup process. But we have exceeded our goal in terms of that staff re-education. And you have in your packet here, you see what the areas of education and training were. In the first week, again, focused on infection control, emergency services, and re-educating staff on making sure that our patients are free from abuse. The second week, the focus was on patients' rights, quality of life, and how to deal with patients with behavioral health challenges. And then the third week focused on quality insurance and performance improvement, then the physical environment of the hospital, and then food and nutrition services. And that, those first three weeks was training that every employee did, no matter what your job classification was. And then finally, in the fourth week, that training was specifically for our clinical nursing and other clinical staff who provide care to patients. So their additional training was in the area of pharmacy and medication passing, comprehensive patient care planning, and then resident assessment. Next slide. So it wasn't your typical kind of training process. Again, we relied upon our consultants to bring best practices in high-performing skilled nursing facilities to us. And what they said is, we need to employ an adult education perspective. So those four weeks of training all had both a didactic lecture-based session. And you see that in the upper left-hand side. We're in the auditorium at Laguna. Staff, we all sat through our courses on those areas that we just discussed. But then after that, we actually had to go through skills demonstration. We actually had to physically be observed washing our hands and then signed off that we know how to do that appropriately. This is all staff. We had to physically, what we call Don and Doth, put on, take off, PPE, the hospital gowns, the gloves, the protective goggles, the protective mask. We all had to go through that. And then we actually had to take a quiz at the end to say that in addition to going through the lecture series, in addition to going through the skills-based training, we then also had to successfully pass a written and verbal quiz that we were able to retain the knowledge. So the consultants have told us that they know that this will pay dividends when CMS comes because it'll really show them how seriously we have taken our commitment to being in compliance with their rules and regulations. Next slide. So in addition to those key milestones, the first mock survey, the re-education and training, the second mock survey that's coming on for October, we've done many additional improvements. We've instituted 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week observations. There are teams of staff that include both our expert consultants, but also some of our own staff. They actually go around to all of the units in the hospital and observe staff, making sure that they are appropriately following all of those, particularly infection control rules. So they're making sure that staff are wearing their gloves when they're supposed to because that was one of the findings of the CMS surveyors. They saw where staff were inappropriately wearing gloves, for example, in the hallway where they shouldn't, which of course is an infection control risk. So now, you know, we are supporting staff by having that real-time training. So as these observers are going around looking for compliance, when they see non-compliance, they also then are able to do real-time coaching and counseling to staff to say, remember, you just went through this training. And recall, you're not supposed to wear these gloves in the hallway. I just saw you wear those gloves. Can you tell me a little bit about that? You know, why do you have these gloves on? And so there's dialogue back and forth. And so there's education. But in addition, we also then monitor the results of those rounds to see, are we showing improvement? Are we having, is compliance increasing? And I'm happy to report that we are beginning to see more sustained improvement in compliance. So much of the work that we've done, particularly in terms of the training, re-education, and we also invite, our union partners have been at the table with us. They've been part of the groups that help to develop the training, but also delivering the message to staff of how important it is to make sure we're in compliance. So in addition to that 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week observation rounding, we also put together what we call a severe findings strike team. So when the teams are around the hospital doing their rounds, you know, usually when, if they find areas of non-compliance, sometimes they're not very significant. But sometimes they might find something really significant, like for example, a crash cart that has the supplies you need in a case of a heart attack or stroke. If they find, for example, we're required to check those carts every day. If they find that there's not documentation that the chart was checked, we consider that a severe finding. And so we have a strike team that goes to that unit, meets with the management and staff of that unit to say, you had a severe finding, let's talk about why you had it and just figure out what we're going to do to fix it so it doesn't occur again. So we've got a lot of interactive communication, training, coaching going on with our staff to, again, all to make sure that when CMS actually does come out, we have the best chance for success. Next slide. And so Supervisor Melgar mentioned this issue of bed, a potential bed reduction. And I talked about this a little bit when I came to you last time. Initially and currently, the communication we have from CMS is that because Laguna became decertified, that whenever we go for recertification, rather than holding us to the rules that were in place in 2010 when the new Laguna Honda Hospital opened, they're going to hold us to the 2016 rules that they adopted. In 2010, when Laguna was built, it was okay to have a room with three patients and that share one bathroom. They changed those rules in 2016 that say you can only have a room with two patients who share one bathroom. What does that mean for Laguna? It means that a total of 120 beds do not currently meet that 2016 requirement of CMS. We were initially under the impression that we would have to de-license, take those 120 beds off of our license. We have since had additional discussion and have determined that we are not going to de-license those 120. The way it works in California is every year, hospitals have to renew their license by the state. You pay a fee for every licensed bed that you plan to operate. So we are actually in the process of submitting our annual relicence now. We are going to relicence our full complement of beds. Now, what that means is, when CMS comes out, they will then have to make a determination, are they going to include those 120 beds that we've submitted and licensed for, they and the California Department of Public Health? So both of them will have to make a decision. Are they going to include those 120 beds in what they survey and what they certify in the event that we are successful? And so what that means is, this is still, I think, unsettled, an unsettled issue. But at least we are preserving our right and ability to have that full complement of beds by not de-licensing them. So I wanted to make sure you were aware that that is the route we're taking right now regarding those beds. Next slide. Again, wanting to keep you updated, while you were on break during the month of August, we experienced what has ended up being the largest kind of COVID outbreak we've had at Laguna since the very beginning of the COVID pandemic. On August 25th, we got up to our highest case level of 55 COVID-positive cases. Dr. Hathaway, in addition to being the chief medical officer, also served as the incident commander for our COVID-19 hospital incident command system, which is a level of, a heightened level of emergency that we enact when there's something unusual that occurs. So Dr. Hathaway successfully led the process over the last two weeks to institute even more stringent COVID-19 precautions, many of which we had initially implemented two years ago, had since gone away with, but then brought back. For example, we reinstated that all visitors to Laguna had to resume being tested onsite and found to be negative before they could come into the facility. We instituted enhanced PPE use among our staff. Not only, no longer was it okay just to have a K95 on the patient units, you actually had to have an N95. You also actually had to have on protective eyewear, goggles. All these enhanced measures in order to decrease what had become spread of COVID at Laguna. And so we're happy to report that from August 25th through yesterday, we are now down to only 11, eight, now only eight cases of COVID at Laguna. And so, you know, we didn't, we felt confident in our ability to get it under control. But again, we're always want to be prepared. We made plans, if we needed to, to actually open up a second COVID-positive unit at Laguna. We always maintain one COVID-positive unit so that when a patient who's on one of our 13 units gets COVID, you know, we want to move them out so that they don't infect other patients. So we have one unit reserved for that. We made plans to open a second unit. But thankfully, because of the work of Dr. Hathaway and the team, we didn't actually have to use that unit. But we made it ready just in case. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of that occurrence that happened during the month of August. And next slide. And so as I begin to wrap up, again, want to leave you with the thought that recertification is our main focus. And so as I begin to wrap up, again, want to leave you with the thought that recertification is our main focus. We are going to license all of our full complement of beds. And we are going to continue on the path that we set out and shared with you a few months ago in terms of our milestones towards being ready to submit for recertification. And that second mock survey that'll occur in October will then really tell us if we're ready to submit and then move forward accordingly. So that is my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pickens. I do see a few questions from colleagues. Supervisor Melgar?
Thank you, President Walton. So I'm so glad to hear that this temporary reprieve has given the staff a little more room as well as, you know, saved some lives in the couple of months that we have it. I wanted to make a point to thank the folks who advocated for that. There was a lot of work that went into letting CMS know what this was doing to San Francisco. But at the forefront were our former city attorney Louise Rennie, Joe Urban, who is one of Supervisor Stephanie's constituents, the California advocates for nursing home reform, our Gray Panthers, and Dr. Teresa Palmer, who has been leading this. So I wanted to ask you a couple of specific things about what you just said. So we now have until November 16th, right? That's the new date.
Thirteenth.
November 13th, I'm sorry. That's our new date. So I am wondering if the presentation that you just gave about where you're at with the process of recertification, if you feel that we will be ready to submit before the November 13th date? Or if we have to renegotiate what the terms are of that pause at some point? Because, you know, I certainly don't want to have families be put in the same position as they were, you know, three months ago of having to scramble and have all of that anxiety. So that is the first question. The second question, and I don't know if that's for you or Dr. Hathaway, who I see here, which is about staffing. Because, you know, I've been a supervisor of other people and I know that whenever you challenge folks to learn new things and, you know, sometimes folks, it makes people unhappy. You know, in addition to the unhappiness of being put in this position to begin with. And so I'm wondering how staffing levels are at Laguna Honda. Have we lost people? Have we, are folks, you know, coming, you know, all of those things? I just, those were my two initial questions and then I'm happy after the answers to turn the floor over to my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, great. So thank you for those questions. I'll try to answer the first one. In terms of timeline, I feel confident in saying that we are definitely on the right track towards making the improvements that are needed to be successful for recertification. Are we there yet 100%? No, we're not. And that's what the first mock survey showed us. So we're implementing those fixes now. I will be in a better position to answer that question more definitively after we have a second mock survey because that will really then tell us, how quickly are we then able to consider submitting that application to CMS? Because again, we don't want to submit and then fail the survey. But I can tell you, particularly the last few weeks, the progress that's being made really puts us in a good place to continue with the milestones that we originally set out to, you know, very soon be able to submit that application.
Okay, and you said the second survey was scheduled for October?
October, yes.
Okay, thank you. And how about the second question?
Oh, in terms of staffing. So as a supervisor, you are very well aware, particularly as you make changes and do trainings and retrainings, particularly for staff who've been in their jobs for a long time and are used to doing it a certain way. You know, it's a process. I think it's a process of, and actually the mayor was great when she came to her visit to Laguna. And actually, she came to one of those training sessions and spoke to the staff in the auditorium and said, "You know, look, I know we're asking you guys to do things in a different way, but the rules that were in place when Laguna opened in 2010 are not all the same rules that are there now. So what you may have been doing for the last few years, some of those things need to change a little bit." And that's why we brought the experts in to make sure that we are aware of what are the most current requirements. And so, you know, don't take it the wrong way when you're being asked to change your practice. Know that it's being done in the spirit of keeping patients and staff safe and also maintaining regulatory compliance. You know, the issue of staffing is always a big one in any healthcare institution, particularly in hospitals. Because as someone who started my career as a nursing assistant on the floor, you never have enough staff. And particularly, it's also exacerbated when, you know, staff members call in sick or people are on leave. And so, you know, there are always challenges with staffing. That's why we try to do per diem staff, we offer overtime, we do registry in order to fill those gaps. And so I can say that, you know, we've made strides. When I first came to Laguna as the interim CEO a few months ago, since then, I think I saw there was a new class of patient care assistants. I think there were like 40 or 50 who just got hired the last three weeks and have gone through orientation. So we're working closely with human resources to fill many of those vacancies. We're not where we need to be, but we definitely are making progress. Because again, you know, there are always competing interests. And right now Laguna has been put at the top of the competing interest list. And so we are getting the support that we may have always gotten, particularly in the area of hiring and staffing.
Thank you Supervisor Melgar. Supervisor Roni?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the very detailed, informative report. And Supervisor Melgar, thank you for all of your leadership in this area. I am glad to see some progress. I just, this is more a comment than a question. I, you know, I want to thank you for keeping those 120 beds licensed. That is a huge concern of mine. Not only do we have a boarding care crisis, it not, and it's not just in the city, it's all over the country, where it's no longer possible for family-owned businesses to maintain boarding cares. It's just not affordable anymore. Losing 120 beds at Laguna is absolutely devastating. You know, in, I work weekly to implement mental health SEF and that includes the Bed Optimization Report, which includes, you know, building new beds, getting new opportunities. And in, you know, recently, in pretty much all of last year, we've only opened two new facilities in San Francisco, Victoria House in my district, and Mina Hotels with, in partnership with the Sheriff's Office and many supervisors here, including Supervisor Safae. And that's not even close to 100 beds. So if you, and there are thousands of people still on the street that are battling mental illness that could use a skilled nursing facility. So I, I just, you know, want to put on the public record once again to CMS, to all the leaders that have decision-making authority over the relicensing. What alternative are you providing? It is incumbent upon us to make sure that we're running a top-quality institution. I believe under your leadership that we are instituting changes that are very necessary. However, if you shut down this facility, what is your alternative? Because last time I checked, you don't have one. You don't take care of our patients. You don't provide housing or services for people with mental illness or severe, that need severe medical attention. The private facilities don't provide an enormous amount of charity care. As a matter of fact, I think we need to force them to provide, you know, for every single bed. CPMC has closed down its skilled nursing facility. I don't think we have another skilled nursing facility in the city. So truly, what is the alternative? And how cruel do you have to be to close down or even shrink the size of this facility? It's, you know, continues to blow my mind. But thank you for the report. Thank you for the progress. I'm, you know, cautiously optimistic that we're moving in the right direction for the first time in a long time. And I just really want to appreciate you, Dr. Pickens, for all your work.
Thank you Supervisor and Mr. Pickens. Don't want to correct the record.
Thank you Supervisor Roni. Supervisor Mar?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks again, Mr. Pickens or Acting Director or CEO Pickens for this update. And really, yeah, glad, glad to hear that the recertification process, it sounds like it's going in a positive direction, hopeful direction. And particularly, really glad to hear about the, you know, the pause on the patient transfers, which was the most urgent and threatening aspect of this when we had the hearing last time. So thanks for all your work on that. And also Supervisor Melgar and all the community advocates for getting that pause. I did have a few, just a few questions. So now that there's a pause until November 13th on transfers, and you did say that, that there's 57 patients that have already been transferred. And I know reportedly that, you know, four, maybe at least four of them died, died after the transfer really tragically. And I was just wondering if these patients are going to be allowed to return to Laguna Honda if that's their desire?
Great. Thank you for that question. And very early on, we determined that upon recertification, we will definitely make the repatriation of any patients who left Laguna, who still have skilled nursing needs, a priority. And they will get priority over any new admissions. So essentially, if patients went to a skilled nursing facility somewhere else and want to come back to Laguna, we will make sure they have that opportunity first before anyone else, as we consider.
That's good to hear. But, so you're saying that that opportunity wouldn't happen until after recertification? Is there a reason why?
Yes, CMS and the state have said that while we are in this closure, we still cannot accept new admissions.
We cannot accept new patients? What about, and does that apply?
That includes the ones who have been transferred.
Yeah, okay. And then also, from your report, it sounds like a lot of the recertification work that's happened so far has been around staff development and staff training, staff education. So that, that sounds really positive and important. And you mentioned that there is about 40 or 50 new staff that were hired, patient care assistants. I was just, I guess my question is, are those new positions? Or are these vacant positions? And how much of the recertification process is related to staffing, inadequate staffing?
Thank you Supervisor Mar. My understanding is those were existing positions that just had not been filled. And so particularly with the certification effort, we were able to enlist the support of HR to prioritize those positions so that they could get filled more expeditiously than perhaps they normally would have been. So those were not new additional FTEs. Those were existing ones that just had not been filled at that time. In terms of the extent, what is the relationship of staffing to certification? I'd say it's pivotal. I mean, we cannot be successful if we don't have the staff to deliver the care. You know, there are like hospital ratios of staffing based upon patient acuity. And so we do meet those ratios. But of course, you know, we staff to those ratios. What always is an issue is when you have last-minute cancellations or if someone calls in sick, you know, we try our best to get someone either through our per diem staff, asking some staff to work overtime or registry. But if that's not successful, then we, then we do sometimes have gaps in having positions filled.
Great, thank you. Thank you, President Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. I don't see any other colleagues on the roster. Madam Clerk, we will now call for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, the Committee of the Whole, the Board of Supervisors welcomes your testimony regarding the Laguna Honda Hospital's strategy for recertification and the submission of a closure and patient transfer and relocation plan. We'll first hear from those who are present in the chamber and then from those who have joined us remotely. Thank you for lining up. Before we call the first speaker, I'll just state that to provide remote testimony, you must be connected to the call-in system. The telephone number's been screaming, it's been streaming on your screen, 415-655-0001. When you hear the prompt, enter the meeting ID, 24967469953. Press the pound symbol twice, you'll have joined the meeting. You'll hear the discussion, but your line will be muted. But press star three when you are ready to provide your comment. The system will indicate to you that you've been unmuted and just speaking, begin speaking your comments. We do have our partners from the Office of Civic Engagement. I would love for them to introduce themselves and the instruction and language. We'll start with Raymond Borres for Filipino, Arturo Cosenza for Spanish, Agnes Lee for Chinese. Welcome. Thank you all three for being with us this afternoon. We know that you know to jump in to assist someone when they do speak in language. All right, for those of you who are here in person, thank you for coming down. Please come to the podium, adjust the microphone so that you can speak directly into it. And we are setting the timer for two minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Melgar for bringing this, President and the rest of the board. My name is Kristin Hardy and I am the current Vice President of San Francisco CIU-1021, as well as a birth and death clerk at San Francisco General Hospital. I am here not only as a union leader, but as a healthcare worker who has been with the city and county for over 11 years. I am here to ask for the full board's support to stay focused on the recertification process for Laguna Honda. I am a San Francisco native, born and raised, who has been living in D7 since 1991 and I was born and raised in D11. As a resident and a San Francisco public health worker, I want to stress the importance of maintaining the existence of this facility, which has been the backbone of providing long-term care for San Francisco's most vulnerable patient population for decades. This facility has been home to hundreds of patients who rely heavily on the special supportive services that Laguna Hospital provides, that other long-term facilities don't, such as the petting zoo that they provide, different crafts and a hair salon on-site for our patients. I am here as a labor leader and a San Francisco resident, asking for the board to make every effort to keep the closure of the largest SNIF in San Francisco skilled nursing facility from closing. This is not just a DPH issue or a labor issue. This is a San Francisco This is a San Francisco issue. It's more of a crisis. And I thank you, Board, for having us. Thank you Supervisor Malgar for always supporting us and the rest of the board. And we are asking for the support for all of the board to make sure that the closure of Laguna Honda does not happen. And I want to thank DPH management for working with labor and making this possible and supporting our membership. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin Hardy, for your comments this afternoon. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Melanie Grossman, and I'm a retired social worker. I'm also the president of the Older Women's League. I'm really glad that I came today. It was wonderful to hear this report. I thought it was very helpful that we have until November 13th to resubmit our recertification process application, and also that we have a really great shot at keeping the full complement of beds that are now available at Laguna Honda Hospital. So actually, I was going to talk about the reduction of beds, but now I do have a question, and that is whether or not we are going to still have the flow project where Laguna Honda automatically had to take patients from San Francisco General. And I would, I think it is important that the hospitals, Laguna Honda's ability to evaluate the patients for themselves and see whether it's an appropriate placement, and if they have the facilities to serve those patients and to keep their patients safe, I think that would be a very important step. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Dan Merer. I worked as a staff nurse in the emergency department at San Francisco General for 30 years. I'm really glad to hear that the recertification, sounds like it's going the right way. But I also, just like the last speaker, want to urge you to look at the elephant in the room long-term, which is can this hybrid model of Laguna being a nursing home, traditional nursing home, and basically an offloading platform for SF General continue? Because I fear if it does, we'll be back here next year with a similar problem. And I'd like to give you a little bit of what I saw as I got to see this slow-moving train lap develop during my years at General. In the early 2000s, we began to see the ER was filling up all the time. We couldn't get patients out, and ambulances would go on divert, which means they would take patients to the private hospitals, to Kaiser, to CPMC. And we, as I said, we'd, and so we'd be on divert. And one of the things we found out was that part of the reason was there were patients upstairs who didn't need SF General beds, but there was nowhere else to go. And hence, the flow project was born, I think, out of that. Part of what I think led to that, there were, the private hospitals, if you go back and look at Health Commission minutes, the private hospitals were less than half pleased to be taking care of SF General patients. They weren't getting reimbursed the way they were accustomed to, and they weren't too pleased to be doing charity care. So the flow project developed. UCSF was also unhappy because their interns weren't getting the kind of teaching they needed. So I don't think this unloading project didn't necessarily evolve with the, for the good of Laguna or Laguna patients. And I think you really need to look at this again to see if you can still function like that, because it wasn't done with the health of Laguna in mind. And it's not working.
Thank you, Dan Merer, for your comments this afternoon. Are there any other members of the public in the chamber who would like to address the board on this matter? All right, seeing none. We will then move to the remote system. We do have assisting us Kevin Lamb. May I ask, Kevin, do we have any callers in the queue, please? Welcome caller. All right, perhaps that's an unattended line. Let's move on to the next caller. I believe we have six, oh, welcome.
Hi, my name is Brenda Barros, and I'm a over 40-year DPH employee. And I just want to really thank everyone who put all this effort into keeping Laguna Honda open. But I think that there's something else that needs to be considered, is that you need to have another facility for those patients who are inappropriate for Laguna Honda. I think that's what kind of led to some of these problems, is mixing up patients. And I think if you had another facility for people with substance abuse problems that were more appropriate, then that would help Laguna Honda also. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda Barros, for your comments. All right, we have 16 listeners, and there are seven callers in the queue. Let's hear from our next caller, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much for holding this hearing. My name is Susan Englander. I'm a former registered nurse, and I'm the convener of the Howard Grayson LGBTQ difference, because this situation affects the LGBTQ community. I want to thank the prog, I want to thank Laguna Honda for the progress that I have seen being made in the PowerPoint presentation by Mr. Pickens. Thank you so much. But I also want to thank the Gray Panthers and Teresa Palmer for making sure that this hearing happens, because I feel as though we are still in situation critical, and I want that to be acknowledged, because I feel as though even as this situation was growing, we were asleep at this switch, moving towards the edge of a cliff and nothing was being done. CMS, they are at fault in terms of their demand that we move from three bedrooms to two bedrooms, which is totally inappropriate. The Department of Public Health is absolutely sanguine during its hearings regarding Laguna Honda and the broader public health crises that have, over the past few years. Board of Supervisors, you know, glad you're picking your heads up now, but this has been a crisis for a very long time, this crisis. And I would like to thank the members of 1021 for stepping up and speaking their minds and working as hard as they do, because we all know Laguna Honda works on the backs of people who are workers at the facility. Once again, I want to address this issue of flow.
Thank you, Susan Englander, for your comments this afternoon. Again, my apologies for interrupting anyone. We are setting the timer for two minutes. All right, Mr. Lamb, let's hear from our next caller, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. This is Kim Cavallone from the San Francisco Labor Council. I am glad to see that this hearing is being held and that CMS finally gave the extension. It's tragic that a number of people have had to die. I just want to make sure that we are paying attention to the issues of staffing and making sure that the staff aren't being shorted. Some of these folks who are at Laguna Honda do require some additional staffing to take care of them. And I just want to make sure that we are maximizing the staff and we are truly staffing up at Laguna Honda to prevent any other mishaps that may happen. I feel like most of the stuff that's come up has been due to short staffing, and I just want to strongly encourage the board to stay abreast of this and make sure that the staffing is appropriate for the patients and make sure that the staff have what they need to take care of the patients that they do have. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Kim Tavaglione, for your comments this afternoon. Let's hear from our next caller, please. Welcome caller. Unattended. Okay, let's go to the next line.
Hi, this is Dr. Teresa Palmer. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Yes. I wanted to address the possibility of resuming evictions of Laguna Honda residents. And this will result in more deaths, and is completely unacceptable. And closure, discharge of patients and closures should be completely uncoupled from certification or recertification. There's no advantage to anyone. There's no place for people who need skilled nurse, Medicare, complex people who need skilled nursing care to go, and there will be, the deaths will resume. And I'm asking the city and the Board of Supervisors and the Public Health Department to stand up for the lives of the people at Laguna Honda and do whatever is necessary to stop the discharges. CMS says they will pull funding. It never insisted that Laguna Honda close. And if the city needs to give bridge funding while writing the neglect that has occurred over the years at Laguna Honda, then maybe bridge funding should occur. But killing more people by evicting them from Laguna Honda is not acceptable, and I beg you to not resume this and to insist that this not resume. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer. All right, Mr. Lamb, let's hear from our next caller, please.
Thank you. This is Monica Lyon, also from the Gray Panthers. I'm glad to hear about progress toward recertification, but what about the discharges? Are these discharges going to resume when, after November 13th? I am very worried that this might happen. Who's going to take responsibility for any more deaths if this, if this happens? Another point, people are waiting five years in order to be able to get into Laguna Honda. Every single one of these beds is necessary. And Laguna Honda must be kept open, whether CMS funds it or not. As Dr. Palmer said, the, what's at risk here is the, is the funding of Laguna Honda, not its license. So Laguna Honda must be kept open. I think this is really a situation of the city having broken Laguna Honda, and it needs to, it needs to buy it and fix it. And if it's a huge amount of money, so be it. The, why did it, why did it take an emergency of nine people dying in order to get the positions filled in the Health Department that have existed for years? I lived in, worked at San Francisco General for 15 years, and we did always hear of positions that were in place but not being filled. The other thing is, the Board of Supervisors has the option of being able to declare a local emergency under the ESA, the Emergency Services Act, that it can be, a local emergency can be proclaimed by a local governing body, such as the City Council or the Board of Supervisors, if the conditions, the disaster, or extreme peril to the safety of persons.
Thank you, Michael Lyon, for your comments. Apologies for interrupting. We're setting the timer for two minutes. Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Claude Joseph, and I am the representative for SCIU Local 1021 that have been working with management on the closure plan and the recertification process. I just want to stress that the closure of Laguna Honda means that over 1,200 members of SCIU 1021 would have lost their job. And this we cannot let happen. And for that purpose, we have been working very hard to make the improvements that Mr. Pickens reported on today. We do appreciate a number of things. We appreciated the mock surveys, because the mock surveys demonstrated the status of the hospital. With 108 F tag failures, it highlighted the mountains that we have to climb to recertify. We do appreciate the training that were provided to everyone, to make sure everybody understands the procedures and protocols that needs to be in place to go through the recertification process. Though not perfect, management have been demonstrating the willingness to work with the union to address issues that we've brought up. There are much more improvements that has been made since we've learned about Laguna Honda status. Where we do struggle, I have to disagree, I do not, we do not, from our standpoint, believe that the six-month period is enough, which is really two months now, given everything that has to be set in motion and put in place for recertification. The speed by which this is taking place is bringing a lot of stress to our members. Our members are fighting every day to keep the hospital open. We are still dealing with short staffing. We have to admit, management have tried to address it, but they can't keep up with the number of staff that are going out, retiring, transferring, and replacing them. So if the Board of Supervisors can do anything in that way to help, that would be very helpful. We are still dealing with workload issues because of the staffing issues. We have to state and make it clear that the plan is not always followed, procedures that are set by the call.
All right, well, thanks to the caller for his comments. There are four callers in the queue. If you have not pressed star three yet, and you're one of the 19 who have been listening and you'd like to make comments, this is the best time for you to press star three. Otherwise, we will take this last group to the end. All right, Mr. Lamb, let's hear from our next caller, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and all in attendance. Thank you for taking my comment. And I'd like to extend a huge thank you to the Board for the unanimously voted resolution that petitioned CMS to stop discharges of Laguna Honda. I believe that made a difference along with the lawsuits from the district attorneys of San Francisco to get the CMS to halt the deadly discharges. It wasn't the deaths of the people that got them to stop. So my name is Donna Deafemia, and I work in complementary medicine, and I have an elderly disabled brother currently at Laguna Honda. To be clear, I feel he is getting good care there relative to any other available Medicare SNF in the area. And San Francisco is his home, and we both want him to reside there. I have been very involved in activism for the benefit of my brother and for the good of all of Laguna Honda. It's very difficult to not feel terrified as a family member and completely outraged, especially towards the CMS's decision. I absolutely align with the list of compassionate and intelligent list of demands of the Gray Panthers, and I'm grateful for their commitment to advocate on behalf of the patients of Laguna Honda and to demand a healthy and reasonable social safety net for those in need of a skilled nursing facility. They listened to Roland Pickens. Laguna Honda seems to be doing a stellar job of getting into compliance, and I don't think this is really the problem. What's really important is the CMS, it sounds like, will likely continue to transfer patients regardless of how many deaths, displacements, and suffering it will cause. I understand this comes from their mandates about compliance and recertification. At least, that is what they say. I believe any thinking and feeling person is on the same page with how insane and cruel this is, imploring the Board of Supervisors once again to find a path to permanently stop these.
Thank you, Donna Deafemia, for your comments this afternoon. All right, Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
I would like to speak in support of stopping the flow project and the inappropriate admissions of people to Laguna Honda Hospital. Free up those beds by supporting sufficient mental health and substance abuse programs and beds to give people the care they need and the sufficient services for elders and people with disabilities to stay in their communities, their homes where possible. The use of inappropriate nursing home admissions has crippled Laguna Honda's ability to deliver care to the catchment area and the appropriate population for which it was built to serve. Laguna Honda is the only facility of its kind left in the United States Laguna Honda is the only facility of its kind left in the United States. Its, its mission must be fulfilled. I'm also very concerned about staffing issues. I felt as though Mr. Pickens really did not address the staffing crisis that is going, that is ongoing at Laguna Honda and has been for a very long time. So Board of Supervisors, do what you have to do to keep Laguna Honda open, to keep the beds free for those to whom it is a, to.
Well, thank you for your comments this afternoon. All right, Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Can you hear me?
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Teresa Rutherford. I am currently the president of SEIU 10-1. And I want to first of all, thank you for having this hearing. Supervisor Melgar, you've been working with us. And I want to thank all the DPH, you know, directors and so on who have worked, worked with us. There are issues at Laguna Honda. There are issues of nepotism. There are issues of staffing. However, we must not use those issues to prevent and to block, you know, patients from being able to be at this hospital. This is a very important healthcare facility. We must not block access to healthcare to our community. Laguna Honda was built to take care of the old and the indigents and it must be there for the community. It must be, it's a vital healthcare facility that must be there to serve the country and the city. And so we must keep it open irrespective of the challenges we face. We must overcome those. CMS as a bureaucracy cannot address the issues of poor people, the issues of, of patients who need this facility. So let's make sure to prioritize the community, the patients. And let's make sure that the staff is there to take care of these patients. I thank you. I look forward to continuing to work with you and I appreciate the progress we have made. But Laguna Honda must remain open and accessible to the community whom we serve. And it must not be used as a means of disrespecting or undermining poor people and people who really need this facility. The city and county of San Francisco, the country needs more healthcare, not less. So thank you. Let's work together. Let's move forward.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you, Teresa Rutherford, for your comments this afternoon. All right, Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
I am Art Persico, an SF Gray Panther board member. As Supervisor Ronan said, there must be alternatives planned to prepare if the worst-case scenario occurs. If it does, transferring residents out of Laguna Honda or its closure will result in serious irreparable harm and potentially some deaths. It's incumbent on those who have the ultimate responsibility for the healthcare and lives of Laguna Honda residents. So it's up to public officials in San Francisco to take timely preventive action, up to including further legal action if necessary. Inaction's not an option when you have those whose life and, life and death responsibilities. Vulnerable lives are at stake and saving those lives is not just necessary, not just possible, it's necessary. Our elderly San Franciscans cannot be made vulnerable to medically unwise decisions made by seemingly blind adherents to bureaucratic procedures callously implemented by local, state or federal government. The SF Gray Panthers call for Laguna Honda to be open for, for all San Franciscans who need nursing home care. No forced closure. The, no discharges for skilled nursing facilities eligible residents. Funding for existing residents must continue until recertification. Support sufficient mental health and substance use programs and beds to give people the care they need and sufficient services for elders and people with disabilities to stay in their communities where possible to prevent inappropriate nursing home admissions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Mr., Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Hello, my name is Betty Traynor. I'm board president at Senior and Disability Action. And I'd like to read a statement that SCA board passed. It says that Senior and Disability Action wants Laguna Honda, Laguna Honda Hospital to stay open and to be recertified by CMS to continue serving residents of San Francisco. But we also call on the city and county of San Francisco to put city resources into creating more options for residents of Laguna Honda and other skilled nursing facilities to live in the community. Many people at Laguna Honda express a desire to live in community settings but have not been given that option and often do not know that it's possible for people with various disabilities to live in the community with support. More housing and supports must be created to make this possible. We realize, I will add, that many people need to be in a skilled nursing facility and particularly at Laguna Honda, which is our premier skilled nursing facility. But we also need to put city, city resources into creating more options for some people so they can get housing and care who do not need to be in a skilled nursing facility. We need more supportive housing buildings. Patients need to be educated about options, how they can live outside of a, an institution like Laguna Honda. I particularly would like us to work together to support people who need to be in Laguna Honda. We indefinitely oppose any forced transfers, but also to work with the community so that there are alternatives for people who really do not need to be at Laguna Honda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Betty Traynor, for your comments this evening. All right, Mr. Lamb, let's hear from our next caller, please.
Hello, my name is Karen Fishkin and I'm on both the Gray Panther Board and the Senior and Disability Action Board. You've heard the positions of both of those organizations. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go into that. You've heard that over and over. I just want to say that in my working life, I was a geriatric social worker and I had clients who did have to go to Laguna Honda eventually. The, with these folks, it was a matter of dementia. It progressed to the point where they, they could not be supported at home with what resources they had. And Laguna Honda, at that point in time, took very good care of them and allowed them to stay within reach of their communities, their families, their medical providers. So please put energy, put more energy into this issue. Laguna Honda must continue and we need more resources in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments this afternoon. Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue?
Good afternoon. My name is Regina Snead. I'm a 50-year resident of San Francisco and I endorse the comments made that Gray Panthers has made, Senior and Disability Action have made. And I want to point out that Laguna Honda provides services to one element of the community. I happen to be fortunate as a senior, I live in a continuing care community that has a skilled nursing facility, has assisted living, has a memory care unit. And I can afford to pay for that. But we have an obligation to serve all the residents of San Francisco. Laguna Honda does that. We need to keep it open. We need to staff it fully. We're having staffing issues here and, and we can afford to pay pretty good salaries, but there is a shortage of skilled nurses and CNAs and other people right now. So the city is going to have to step up and make sure that Laguna Honda has adequate staffing to serve the community here. It's very important. Thank you for having this hearing today. I am one of the people that will follow this issue. I'm, I'm speaking up today because I'm watching on Comcast Cable and a lot of people are watching it. A lot of people don't speak up at Board of Supervisor hearings, but I can tell you in my community of 300 seniors here that we're all very concerned about this. Have many conversations with people around here. And I'm really happy to hear the progress and there's a lot more to be done. We can't allow any patients to be transferred out at this point. We need to get those that were transferred out back in and we need to provide the continuum of care opportunities that Senior and Disability Action was talking about as part of the larger plan to serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina Snead, for your comments this afternoon. Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Cheryl Thornton. I am a healthcare worker, an SEIU member, and I also work at Curry Senior Center in the Tenderloin. I want to thank you for having this hearing today. It was very informative and it gives me hope and confidence that Laguna Honda will be saved. I want to thank Mr. Pickens for his leadership and report backs about Laguna Honda. I agree with Teresa, the, the president of our union, Teresa, I'm sorry, her last name escaped me, Brenda Barrows and Dr. Palmer. I believe that Laguna Honda really is a jewel of San Francisco and it needs to be maintained. There are many people here on the streets that do not have funds to go to a private facility to take care of themselves. We really need to keep this. San Francisco has a great deal of wealth and we need to take care of all people in San Francisco. So thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Cheryl Thornton, for your comments this afternoon. Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Madam Clerk, we have no more callers in the queue.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lamb. Are there any other members of the public here in the chamber who'd like to address the board on this matter? All right, seeing none. Mr. President?
Thank you. Seeing no other comment. Public comment is now closed. Supervisor Melgar.
Thank you, President Walton, and thank you colleagues for all your efforts and support on this issue. I just wanted to say, you know, it's, it really touches my heart how important this institution is to the citizens of San Francisco. This is a gem. And if we as a city and we as a country in this Democratic administration believe in healthcare for all, we need to support Laguna Honda and ensure it's of its success, you know, in the future for generations to come. So if, if possible, President Walton, I would like to make a motion that we continue this item to November 1st. It's the first Tuesday in November. I hope that by then, we will have had that second mock survey, that we will have a certain date for the scheduling of the recertification and that we will have, you know, good news to share in that, you know, we can, you know, save Laguna Honda. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Melgar is there second? Seconded by Supervisor Chan. Madam Clerk, on the motion to continue to our November 1st Board of Supervisors meeting?
On the motion to continue, items 17 to November 3rd.
Item 19.
Excuse me, item 19. Thank you, Mr. President. Supervisor Dorsey. Dorsey, aye. Supervisor Mandelman? Mandelman, aye. Supervisor Mar? Mar, aye. Supervisor Melgar? Melgar, aye. Supervisor Peskin?
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston? Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan? Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safai?
Aye.
Safai, aye. Supervisor Stephanie? Stephanie, aye. Supervisor Walton?
Aye.
Walton, aye. And Supervisor Chan? Chan, aye. There are 11 ayes.
Thank you. Without objection, motion to continue carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, are we ready to go back to item 18?
I don't believe so, Mr. President.
All right, then let's continue with our roll call for introductions.
Next up would be Supervisor Safai to hear introduction of new business.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone. Love going after a long hearing. Gotta get my head together. But, okay, so I have a few things I want to talk about. Some of them I'm going to talk about in an abbreviated version. One of which is something Supervisor Peskin and I were talking about. This was a previous piece of legislation that we passed regarding recycling large refuse generators, those are the larger institutions, large apartment buildings, large hospitals, hotels, others. When we looked at this legislation, we were looking at our goals to achieve zero waste and diversion by 2030. We realized that number of participants weren't necessarily really participating in the program of sorting and recycling and diverting things from landfill. We passed that legislation. We worked collectively with all of the groups and interest, interested parties that we've mentioned here along with representative labor, particularly the janitors union that does a lot of this work in a lot of these facilities and other frontline staff. We then put on into the legislation that we would require there to be an update. We wanted to see how the progress was taking place in terms of diversion and who was participating and/or who was just paying the fee for not sending things to landfill. It's time to have a hearing. We also put that on pause as a result of COVID. We wanted to give people the opportunity to, to really, you know, survive generally during what happened in, in that economic downturn. So, and it also would not give us a good indication if a lot of people were actually not in the office or not in hotels or not in institutions. We wouldn't really know how it was going. So we're calling for a hearing. I'm introducing that today, Department Environment, to give us progress on how those large generators of trash are doing, how we're beginning to achieve our refuse diversion goals. I want to thank Supervisor Peskin for co-sponsoring that hearing with me. Secondly, if colleagues will remember, we saw a number of institutions, businesses, small businesses that were broken into, that were targeted because they're cash-heavy business, cannabis retailers being one of them. We have worked with the planning department, looking at our planning code to allow for, and again, this was something the cannabis industry asked us for, allow for their businesses to use roll-down gates in certain instances. So we have worked with the planning department and we're introducing an ordinance today that would allow for cannabis retailers in particular to have roll-down gates and railing and grill work so that they could protect their businesses. Something the industry asked for, something that they were denied when they requested it. And so we also wanted to deal with, there's a lot of existing businesses that are non-conforming that would not be allowed to continue to maintain their roll-down gates. So in this ordinance, we allow for them to be subject to the provisions of non-compliant structures so that they could be grandfathered in. And then going forward, we wouldn't allow for these, anyone other than these particular areas. We've heard a lot of issues of vandalism. We've heard a lot of issues of crime and many of you saw the reports that happened. And as a city planner, I'm very much about aesthetics. I'm very much about creating eyes on the street. But in this instance, we have to prioritize safety and protection of businesses first because crimes were being organized with organized groups and they had the billing to overwhelm the existing protections that were in place. So these crimes impact these businesses in a very particular way and they have an effect on the entire commercial corridor. So we're going to work to not only enhance public safety but also the planning code and, and look at how we're going to prevent these types of activities going forward. I think this, does this by allowing for the roll-up gates in these specific instances. And we can take the, the rest as we see how it moves forward in the process. Next, folks, we have a contract at, at the request of the SFMTA. We're introducing an extension of the city's towing contract. We had a tremendous amount, I know in my district, I know in Supervisor Walton's district, we talked about this over time, a lot of abandoned vehicles that were creating blight that were being utilized for, for some types of criminal activities. They were stolen, dropped off and then left there for a significant amount of time. This contract allows for removing those vehicles and it also allows for addressing another piece of legislation that we put forward that had to do with stunt driving and illegal sideshow driving so that those, this contract then can put more resources into towing and going after those that participate. This is supported by organized labor and the Teamsters. This extension, I think this is. this extension, I think this is the Seventh Amendment. We did not allow for a longer amendment the last time. We wanted to see proof that this was actually being utilized in an appropriate way. So, it also provides good jobs and local jobs for working people. So, we're very, very happy about that. So, we're going to put that forward. It should be coming to the budget and Land Use Committee. And then, finally, folks, as it relates specifically to our economic recovery, Supervisor Mandelman talked about a letter of inquiry. Supervisor Stephanie also put a letter of inquiry as it pertains to our economic tax base, return-to-work practices. But essentially, what we're asking for today, and we're calling for a hearing on a re-envisioning of our downtown core, the time for discussion and putting the data together and looking at the facts, we have, in terms of our recovery, we are at about 30% office occupancy. As it relates to other parts of the United States, as Supervisor Mandelman stated earlier, we are the slowest in that regard. We are very, we're very supportive of and have embraced and seen the growth of the tech sector, but because of that, we are seeing also a slower return to office and a slower recovery of our economic base. In our economic core, you know, downtown, SOMA, the waterfront, all of these areas have collectively some of the largest business tax base in our entire city. Our tax structure needs to be reviewed. I said that a couple of weeks ago. We'll say it again. It has to be on the table, but also a re-envisioning and an understanding of our land use policies. We cannot believe that we will continue to have the same amount of office space utilized in the same way it has in the past, but we need to have the right stakeholders at the table. We need to have a discussion about the future. There needs to be short-term, medium-term, and long-term solutions, because as has been noted today multiple times, I think our commercial tax base, if I'm saying this correctly, comprises about 12% of about the property tax revenue that we bring in. Our business tax revenue is over $1 billion a year. As our policies are right now, and as the slower return to office is, we will see a major economic hit to our budget, and it will impact many, many industries. So, this actually really should be an impetus to really think about and re-imagining our land use policies, our uses in the downtown core, in the surrounding areas, and what we think about the future. I'm going to be forming and asking for forming a working group. I welcome Supervisor Mandelman, Supervisor Stephanie, and anyone else that wants to participate in that, to look at what the solutions might be, whether they be land use, tax reform, tax incentives, or other measures that encourage, you know, the overall recovery of our economic downtown core. You've heard from folks in the building trades that will say a significant portion of their work has to do with office rehabilitation work. You'll talk to people in the service sector, janitors, security guards, others that work in these buildings that will say their membership has been laid off consistently over the last two years, and they don't see any end in sight. You'll talk about the surrounding small businesses and the hotel and the tax revenue that's generated by individuals that come into town, and also that are frequenting and visiting these businesses that are not coming back at a faster pace. So, we need to have a real honest discussion about the future of our downtown core, and I look forward to inviting anyone that wants to be a part of that, including Supervisor Ronan. I know she's excited about that. And anyone else, along with our Office of Economic and Workforce Development, our Controller, our Planning Department, Department of Building Inspection, Assessor Recorder, our City's Economist, and others that, and the Small Business Commission that have been in previous hearings, we invite them to be part of this hearing, and we invite a whole host of stakeholders to participate. Thank you, colleagues, and the rest I submit.
Thank you, Supervisor Safaii. Thank you. Supervisor Stephanie?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes, we've all been having discussions about this. Actually, I've been having many discussions about what Supervisor Safaii just spoke about, and before the legislative recess, as you recall, I issued a letter of inquiry to Assessor Torres, Controller Rosenfield, Director Sofis, and Chief Economist Ted Egan, asking them to assess the likelihood and the impact of reduced demand for commercial space in San Francisco, especially in our downtown, and the impact on our local tax revenue. San Francisco's downtown core and financial district have been devastated by the pandemic, as we know, and early signs indicate that a recovery continues to lag behind the rest of the nation. A report from February indicated that our job recovery is 15% lower than the national average and 10% lower than California as a whole. Right now, we have the most challenging office market in the country. San Francisco, with its heavy concentration of tech employees, is particularly vulnerable to remote work that has kept workers out of downtown offices. The San Francisco metro area has the lowest share of workers back at the office among 10 U.S. cities, with about a quarter of employees returning as of February 23rd. The city's office market had a 22.6 vacancy rate at the end of 2021 compared with 16.6% for the U.S. Other indicators, like our hotel occupancy, domestic air travel, and transit ridership, indicate that San Francisco is well behind other major U.S. metro areas. More than 42% of San Francisco's small businesses and 30% of its total employment are located within the area defined as the city's economic core, according to data from the Controller's office. Prior to the pandemic, the area was responsible for generating more than 45% of the city's sales tax. Since then, the neighborhood has seen some of the largest declines in sales tax revenue, with some zip codes experiencing a more than 50% drop between 2019 and 2021. Since recess in the intervening month, I have met with departments, including the City Economist, and they are developing a model to project the impact of the lack of demand for commercial office space and to help us guide policy solutions to revitalize downtown. I've also met with the Chamber of Commerce and BOMA, who are telling incredibly disheartening stories about their attempts to even give away property and rent it for a dollar, and they can't even do that. So, I am looking forward to the model that our chief economist is working on, and I know that will be ready in October. And as a result, I am calling for a hearing on the local economy, the future of commercial real estate, and the impact on our local tax revenue. I will also be closing today's meeting in memory of Monsignor John Sandersfeld, who passed away on Wednesday, August 3rd, at the age of 82. Monsignor Sandersfeld attended Bellarmine College Prep in San Jose, and after spending one year at Santa Clara University, he found his calling to the priesthood and attended St. Patrick's Seminary in Menlo Park. He was ordained in 1966. Locally, he served as an associate pastor at St. Kevin's Parish, Most Holy Redeemer, as well as Mission Dolores, all here in San Francisco. He served as pastor of the Most Holy Trinity Catholic Church, vicar for clergy for the Diocese of San Jose, and was charged with literally building the parish church of St. Francis of Assisi in South San Jose from the ground up, a monumental task that resulted in the formation of the thriving parish community that exists to this day. In 2000, he was named a monsignor by Pope John Paul II. His interests were fishing, reading, gatherings with family and friends around the dinner table and conversation. He had a commanding presence in general and constantly helped those in need, whether it be financially or spiritually. He was a selfless, thoughtful man who will be missed by his friends, family, and the thousands of parishioners that he dedicated his life to. Monsignor Sandersfeld was known for keeping lists for everything, even a list for his own funeral arrangements. They were "to make it short and to not talk about him, but about the faith." This captured the essence of his dedication to the community and the church he loved. To all those who knew him, he lived the gospel in form, not just in word, advocating for the unhoused and helping to procure funding for childhood education. I'm lucky to have known him very well through my husband's family. They are distant relatives, and he was one of several priests on the altar when I was married. Monsignor Sandersfeld is survived by his sisters Ann Lambert and Jo Sandersfeld, and his nieces Tony Presta and Lisa Middlebrook. He will be dearly missed. The rest I submit.
Thank you. Supervisor Stephanie? Supervisor Walton?
Submit.
Submit, thank you. Supervisor Chan?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, I was going to submit today, but upon hearing from both Supervisor Mandelman and Supervisor Safaii, as well as Supervisor Catherine Stephanie's introduction today, really specifically about downtown, I just wanted to let you all know too, actually, before recess, we have submitted a request specifically for the budget and legislative analyst requesting really, to really think about the future of San Francisco. While considering the downtown and impact of downtown, it is perhaps time to break the traditional downtown mode and really think about neighborhoods in San Francisco and think of the city as a whole. We see that there has always been this investment and both in transits and land use and just the way that we formed this traditional downtown ideals for many, many decades in San Francisco, but perhaps it is time to accept that new normal, the new normal that workers will be working from home. There could be a hybrid of working environments and lifestyles, that perhaps that San Francisco is, it is time for this, our city to embrace it, to understand how neighborhoods connect with each other and beyond. And so, that report is really mainly focused on land use, the vision of land use and the future of land use in San Francisco, angering around the old traditional downtown mode, but what could the future look like? That land use analysis will probably also include sort of the rethinking around transit. So, I look forward to having all these conversations with all of your colleagues, and truly, I think, great minds think alike, and that we're all kind of thinking about the future in San Francisco, how we can recover. And in my opinion, that it is time to think both business, corporate business, small business, but also our workers and the people living in this city and having that balanced approach and making sure that the recovery is equitable. Thank you.
Thank you.
The rest I'll submit.
Thank you, Supervisor Chan. And, Mr. President, seeing no other names on the roster, that concludes the introduction of new business.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk, and I believe now we do have the results for item number 18.
Yes, just returning to item 18. The returned weighted ballots voting against the Tourism Improvement District equals 4.43%, indicating there is not a majority protest.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk, and we will now vote on the resolution. Would you please call the roll on the resolution to establish, renew, and expand the Tourism Improvement District and levy assessments?
Yes, on item 18, as amended, Supervisor Dorsey.
Aye.
Dorsey, aye. Supervisor Mandelman?
Aye.
Mandelman, aye. Supervisor Mar?
Aye.
Mar, aye. Supervisor Melgar?
Aye.
Melgar, aye. Supervisor Peskin?
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston?
Aye.
Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan?
Aye.
Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safaii? Safaii absent. Supervisor Stephanie?
Aye.
Stephanie, aye. Supervisor Walton?
Aye.
Walton, aye. And Supervisor Chan?
Aye.
Chan, aye. There are 10 ayes.
Without objection, this resolution is adopted as amended. Madam Clerk, we are now at public comment.
Yes, at this time, the Board of Supervisors welcomes general public comment. We'll first hear a comment from those present in the chamber, afterwards, from those who have joined the board remotely. To provide your remote testimony, you must be connected to the call-in system. That telephone number is streaming on your television or your computer screen, 415-655-0001. When you hear the prompt, enter the meeting ID, 24967469953. Press the pound symbol twice. You will have joined the meeting. You'll hear the discussion, but you'll be muted. Once connected, that's when you should press star three. The system will indicate you've raised your hand. Just continue to wait, listen carefully until the system states you have been unmuted, and that is then the time for you to just start speaking your comments. During general public comment, you may speak to the minutes, to the items on the adoption without committee reference calendar, items 22 through 25, and other general matters that are not on today's agenda but are within the board's subject matter jurisdiction. All other agenda content will have been reported out to the board by an appropriate committee or public hearing where the public comment requirement was fulfilled. All right, so we are still joined by our partners from the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs. They know to jump in to assist the public with access to the remote call-in system and with their public comment. That's Raymond Boras for Filipino, Arturo Cosenza for Spanish, and Agnes Lee for Chinese. Welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen. This is Raymond, from the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs. I would like to ask you for your help in the Philippines. Please answer my questions. If you have any comments, you can call 415-655-0001. I will use our meeting ID, 24967469953. After this, I will repeat the question. If you are satisfied with my participation, please answer. If you have any questions, please press star three, and tell me if you want to speak or if you are unmuted. Please answer my questions in the next 15 minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Arturo Cosenza. I am an employee of the Office of participation civic and immigrant affairs. I provide services and interpretation in Spanish until 7:00 p.m. For your public commentary, please mark 415-655-0001, followed by the code of access, 24967469953, plus the number two times. Then, press this 3rd button, and before you start speaking, please let the system know that your line has been activated or you have been unmuted in English. You will have only 2 minutes to answer your comments. Thank you.
Hello, I am San Francisco and Immigration Administration's Chinese translator, Enes. Now is a public comment segment. If you want to contribute your opinion, please call 14156550001, then enter the meeting ID number, 24967469953. Then, after pressing the 2nd button, and after listening to your opinion, please press the 3rd button to continue your发言. When you hear the notification, you have been unmuted. If you have deleted the sound, it means you can start your speech. Your发言 time不得超过 2 minutes. If you want to contribute your opinion, you will be优先发言. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for being with us this afternoon, and now I invite you to come up to the podium, just to adjust that microphone so that we can hear you properly.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk, and good afternoon, good evening to the President Walton and all the supervisors. And my name is Valerie Scheibels, and I'm a Burmese American and represent the Burmese American community in the Bay Area. On the behalf of the $150,000 Burmese American living here, and I ask for the support from the leaders of this, in the city and the county of San Francisco to condemn the Myanmar military coup. On the February 1st, 2021, there was a coup by the military placing money under house arrest, arresting, including our democratically elected government state counselor in 1991, Nobel Peace Prize recipients, the Honorable Aung San Suu Kyi, and the president's wingman. The military seized powers and made unfounded claims of the widespread systematic elections' irregularities. All those international and domestic elections observers found that the election was incredible, reflected the will of the majority of the voters in the country. Military Honda troops are using all the available weapons to unjustly commit acts of violence against all the ethnic villages and its people. All the ethnic groups continue to defend the country, sacrificing not only their wealth, but also their life and property. In the post-coup era, the number of political prisoner has increased every day. United Nations experts called for the Myanmar actions as that trove passes more than 2,000 individuals. Honda's forces have killed over 2,000 civilians, arrested another 14,000, and displaced more than 700,000 citizens, driving the number of internally displaced individuals to over 1 million, and pledging the country into the economic and humanitarian crisis, threatening the lives and the well-being of millions. The military attack on the people of Myanmar constitute crime against humanity and including war crimes. Since February 1st, the Burmese community has peacefully protested in front of city halls once a week and Saturday to condemn the action of Myanmar military dictators, and now 73 times in total. The Burmese community in the Bay Area and from all over the United States are requesting your combined help and support from the city and county, all the way to the state level, including going to the United States Congress to help us on condemning Myanmar military coup. I hope that our leaders in San Francisco County will give their support to Burmese Amer-
Thank you, Valerie Scheibels, for your comment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great, thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public in the chamber who'd like to address the board? All right, seeing, sir, are you interested in speaking at the podium? Okay. Perhaps not. Ma'am, are you are you going to address the board? Now's your time. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Sarah Benton. I've been homeless more than 20 years now on purpose. On my phone, I can't make a phone call like you. I can't get on the on the internet at the library. I can't call my kids, okay? I have no rights at all. I'm located at the Good Hotel, and every day I have to listen to "Be, Get the Hell Up Outta Here." I'm a snitch. I'm sick all the time because I'm what you call a snitch. Who am I going to snitch on? I have no rights at all. When I call my kids' number, it's out of service. It's not right. It's not right for the government to keep me homeless, to hide the dirt that they've done to me. I don't deserve to be on the streets. I don't deserve to be lied on and treated like a piece of crap and a piece of shit. I need some help, and I deserve a right to be here just like anybody else. I'm a very good person, and I need a place to stay. I need some help from somebody. I've been going through this for 20 years. Why am I homeless? Why don't I have a case manager? Why can't I make a phone call and get through? I'm not crazy. You can say anything you want to about me, but I deserve to live just like any and everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the chamber who'd like to address the board? I'm seeing none. I am going to turn your attention to the remote call-in system. Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Hi, are you ready for me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Grace Simjou. I'm the director of the Japanese Peruvian Oral History Project and of the Campaign for Justice Redress Now for Japanese Latin Americans, serving our members in San Francisco, the San Francisco Bay Area, and other parts of this nation and other countries. I support item 24, the resolution to acknowledge the World War II history of Sharp Park through interpretive signage. This camp imprisoned more than 2,500 immigrant residents in the U.S. of Japanese, German, and Italian ancestry, particularly here of our San Francisco Bay Area, as well as those immigrant residents and citizens seized from Latin America, transported to the U.S. and interned for the purpose of hostage exchange for U.S. citizens held in Europe and the Far East War Zones. Research and oral histories conducted by these communities are uncovering what happened to those persecuted as a so-called enemy in the U.S., including Sharp Park and the San Francisco Bay Area. For immigrant residents seized from Latin America, we know they included 119 Japanese from Peru and 26 Germans on the ship Monterey, which had left Panama and arrived in San Francisco on July 15, 1943. They were detained at Sharp Park and later transported to other enemy alien concentration camps. This resolution calls for acknowledgement of this dark World War II history and for recognition of those accused of being quote "potentially dangerous" enemy aliens, whose rights and lives were violated, and the long-lasting impact on their families and communities, including succeeding generations. It is also an important opportunity for dialogue and to draw lessons from our past as we address the challenges of today, especially as we confront government overreach, wide supremacist authoritarianism, heightened racism, anti-immigrant bigotry, religious intolerance, and the undermining of our democracy. Thank you for your consideration. Please support the resolution for the signage at Sharp Park. Thank you.
Thank you Grace Simjou for your comments. Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Good afternoon. This is Jordan Davis. My pronouns are she and her. Let's just say I'm very concerned about the recent introduction today of the conversation around remote public comment. I am right now giving remote public comment because I just don't feel like going into the board chambers. And I know I'm not a big fan of like continuing mask mandates or about the long like sometimes people like from other parts of the country delaying public comment for a really long time and causing eight hours delays for the board supervisors. But I will agree that we need to continue remote public comment for the near future and perhaps improve it because this is just really thickening that like people who may not be able to make the meeting for various reasons have to go without having their voices heard. I think remote public comment should be kept permanent. The second thing I want to bring up is you probably heard in the Chronicle last month about the eviction crisis and permanent supportive housing. And I mean, it's something that like a lot of people like us are organizing around. And I just want to say that like frankly, the board of supervisors needs to stay the fuck out of our lives. You need to start, you need to like listen to us. When we are trying to propose policy and we are organizing around this, we are devising policy, we need to say, and we are talking to a supervisor, we just need to stay the fuck out of our lives because it's just like mean and annoying when people decide that they're going to like think they know what's best for us. So that's just all I had to say today. I yield my time. Fuck you.
Thank you, Jordan Davis, for your comments. Mr. Lamb, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Madam Clerk, there are no more callers in queue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lamb. All right, Mr. President.
Thank you, seeing no more of the public wishes to comment. Public comment is now closed. Supervisor Peskin, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the for adoption without committee reference agenda, items 22 through 25?
Items 22 through 25 were introduced for adoption without reference to committee. A unanimous vote is required for resolutions on first reading today. Alternatively, a member may require a resolution on first reading to go to committee.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Peskin?
Item 24.
Thank you Supervisor Peskin. Supervisor Melgar?
I'd like to be added as a cosponsor to items 23 and 24, please.
Thank you Supervisor Melgar. Supervisor Marr? Thank you Supervisor Marr. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role on items 22 and 25?
On items 22 and 25, Supervisor Dorsey. Dorsey, aye. Supervisor Mandelman? Mandelman, aye. Supervisor Marr?
Aye.
Marr, aye. Supervisor Melgar? Melgar, aye. Supervisor Peskin?
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston? Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan? Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safai? Safai, aye. Supervisor Stephanie? Stephanie, aye. Supervisor Walton?
Aye.
Walton, aye. And Supervisor Chan? Chan, aye. There are 11 ayes.
Thank you. Without objection, these resolutions are adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, please call item number 23.
Item 23 is a resolution. Hold on, Mr. President, my computer froze for a moment. Item 23, this is a resolution to support the Burmese people, a return to a democratic and civilian-run government, and urging the Myanmar military to cease violence against peaceful protesters and release political prisoners detailed after the February 1st, 2021 coup d'etat.
Thank you Supervisor Marr.
Thank you President Walton and also Supervisor Mandelman and Melgar for cosponsoring this resolution, and also thank you Supervisor Melgar for her resolution supporting Burma Human Rights Day on March 13th. And I also really want to acknowledge the leaders and organizations here in the Bay Area, Burmese community, for their active and passionate support of a return to a democratic and civilian rule in their homeland. And special thanks to the community leaders that really stayed throughout the entire board meeting today for this important resolution, Valerie Scheibels, Pew Ja, Ken Zen, and Ron Lee. Valerie already spoke very compellingly about the shocking events of the past two years in the beautiful country of Burma that have created a crisis in human rights and democracy there. So I just wanted to, you know, add that San Francisco is home to one of the largest populations in the United States of immigrants and refugees who fled Burma due to political repression, human rights abuses, and economic instability. And the people of Burma today are organizing a national strike and peaceful uprising to reject the coup. So at this critical moment in the struggle for democracy and civilian rule in Burma, this resolution urges the Myanmar military to cease violence against peaceful protesters and to release political prisoners detained after the February 2021 coup d'etat. So colleagues, I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much Supervisor Marr. I don't see anyone else on the roster, so I believe we can take this item same house, same call, and without objection, this resolution is adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, please call item number 24.
Item 24, this is a resolution to urge the Recreation and Parks Department to develop and install appropriate interpretive signage on site at Sharp Park to acknowledge and set forth the site's dark chapter in San Francisco and American history as a concentration camp in consultation with the Japanese-American community.
Thank you Supervisor Peskin.
Thank you President Walton, colleagues. I spoke to this last week upon introduction, but want to thank and acknowledge the unsolicited cosponsors of this measure, Supervisors Chan, Walton, Preston, Mandelman, Marr, and Melgar, and Safai, and Ronan. Six months ago, Supervisor Chan recognized the shameful history of Executive Order 9066 by then-President Franklin Roosevelt that resulted in the incarceration of over 120,000 people of Japanese-American descent, many of them citizens of this country. And that is well-known to us, the fact that most of the Bay Area Japanese community was interned in concentration camps in Utah near the town of Delta, Utah, the Topaz Camp, and those from Southern California largely at Manzanar, known to us. The fact that many of those individuals in the Bay Area were temporarily put in the horse stables at Tanforan, now a shopping center in San Mateo County, known to us. But largely erased from our knowledge and history is the fact that a San Francisco Recreation and Parks facility, Sharp Park, weirdly enough, a park that this city owns in another county in San Mateo County, was a similar facility, which I did not know until my neighbor Gary Kamia wrote that in a history piece in the San Francisco Chronicle about a month ago. And that led to this resolution. I want to thank the many organizations and individuals that have come along in support of that and people who helped Sonny Angulo in my office, and I write that, Diane Matsuda from the Historic Preservation Commission, former planning commissioner, Bill Sugaya, the Japanese-American Citizens League, and my constituent Joyce Nakamura, several of whom pointed out some historic, not inaccuracies, but detail that needed to be added to this resolution. And those amendments are before you, colleagues, which are some specific references to the fact that this was under the jurisdiction of the War Relocation Authority, that this temporary holding station that was glibly called Camp Sharp Park rather than Prison Sharp Park was under the, was established under the auspices of the Immigration and Naturalization Services, and that it included non-citizens of Japanese descent, as you heard the public speaker speak to, who were actually not even from the United States. They were actually basically from, they weren't basically, they were from other countries. They were from, they were Japanese, people of Japanese descent from Latin America, as well as individuals from other quote-unquote "enemy nations," including Germans, Italians, and Chinese. All of that is set forth in the amendments that are before us that I would like to move, together with a further resolved directing the clerk of this board to transmit a copy to the Director of the Recreation and Parks Department and a request that the Recreation and Parks Commission hold a hearing and take action on the contents of this resolution. So I'd like to move those amendments and thank you all for your cosponsorship and support.
Thank you Supervisor Peskin. Do we have a second? Seconded by Supervisor Ronan. And these are non-substantive? Thank you. Supervisor Safai?
I just, I just want to be added.
Thank you Supervisor Safai.
Item number 24, please.
Supervisor Stephanie?
Thank you, President Walton. I want to thank you Supervisor Peskin and you too Supervisor Chan for bringing this resolution, and I would like to be added as a cosponsor.
Thank you Supervisor Stephanie. Supervisor Ronan?
Yes, thank you, colleagues, Chan and Peskin, for this important history lesson. I can't believe we are learning this for the first time and would like to be added as a cosponsor.
Thank you Supervisor Ronan. And on the motion to amend made by Supervisor Peskin, seconded by Supervisor Ronan, we will take that same house, same call. So the motion carries to amend item 24. And on the amended item 24, we will take that item same house, same call, and this amended resolution is adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any imperative items this afternoon?
There are none to report.
And would you please call or read out the in memoriam?
Yes, today's meeting will be adjourned in memory of the following beloved individuals: on behalf of Supervisor Mandelman, for the late Andrew Tongken; and on behalf of Supervisor Stephanie, for the late Monsignor John Sandersfield.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Do we have any further business?
That concludes our business for today.
Thank you. Research your own experience. Absorb what is useful. Reject what is useless. Add what is uniquely your own. Bruce Lee, this meeting is adjourned.